What we would actually see.
Actually, let's open the meetings.
Wait, I need to, I need to approve, I need to approve my, my computer is asking me to approve things here before I can log in.
Still open?
Yes.
If only I didn't get logged out five times this weekend.
Would you like a, a Yubiki? That's a new thing that we have, um, that we got through grant and.
Hmm.
We can just plug it into your phone, I'm sure you'll be able to use it.
Well, the issue is Verizon likes to go to SOS mode now ninety percent of my life, so if I'm logging in and it switches to SOS mode, it blocks me out for like four hours to re-log in through the pass key or whatever it's called.
Okay. What?
Okay, it wouldn't help it.
Yeah, no, no.
Okay.
Alright, so why don't we just, we'll get stuff signed because we, um, I think we're gonna have a spirited discussion.
Are we, uh, are we officially open?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why I told you.
Okay, just checking.
We were open and I was waiting on you.
Didn't know if we had to approve that.
Nope.
Okay.
I could open without anybody's approval.
Oh geez. Ken's not here, people getting all bossy.
No, actually Cal is keeping me in check tonight.
Okay.
Alright, so the first item I had is an accounts payable manifest in the amount of, wow. Five hundred forty-three thousand thirty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. Has to be a school payment, Cal?
What's that again, three hundred?
Probably.
No, five hundred, five forty-three.
Yep.
O thirty-six.
Yeah.
Point seven five.
Geez.
Yep, Shaker Regional School District is five hundred eighteen, I'm at five hundred nineteen thousand.
Well, okay, um.
Alright, so looking, okay, I'll second all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Let's pay the school.
And others.
And others. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and Cal, I'll pass those over to you. Alright, next is a payroll manifest in the amount of eighty-eight thousand thirty dollars and eighty-two cents.
Still moved.
Second, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye. Seems small in comparison.
It's unusually high.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah.
Um, because of Manhattan Road Speedway and Deerfield Fair, so there were a lot of details that happened, so.
Yeah, yes, there were.
Pretty much all of that is coming back to us with invoices.
Yeah.
Nice. Deerfield Fair, interesting.
Yeah, probably the police, I'm assuming, not, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't realize we covered Deerfield Fair.
Well, I think they put out a call pretty much statewide.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah.
For, for Deerfield?
Yeah.
Well, for Deerfield, why?
In particular, why? Because they can't get people, it's the same, they're the same issues as everybody else.
Oh. Yeah, I just, oh.
Alright, uh, appointment slips. So we've got Mary Wachunki, Deputy Treasurer of Canterbury, I know we talked about that, I think the last time we met.
Yes.
That we need a deputy treasurer, um, and, uh, I think Mary's name came up then, we talked about this, huh?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, we need a deputy treasurer for paperwork.
Yep.
For an investment, one of the investment things, that.
Right.
The new investment policy with TD Bank, and especially if Al's not available, somebody else needs to sign.
Yes.
Anything, and there's very specific about who can and can't, and there aren't many people who can, so.
Yes, so Mary, um, used to be treasurer, um, and she was willing to be deputy.
Yeah, that's great, I'm glad she agreed.
Yeah, absolutely. Alright, next is Randy Johnson, Budget Committee member, thank you Randy for volunteering.
I'm.
Or being volunteered, we'll take you either way, thank you.
Um, do you, will Randy get the meeting schedule? Cause we added that extra meeting in November?
Um, yes, I've.
Okay, very good.
I think I started putting Randy on the emails last week.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah, typically.
I, I assumed.
Yeah, yeah, typically we wouldn't have met until December, but the, um, transfer station is such a big.
Uh huh.
Item that we run out of a separate meeting to, to discuss that with everyone, with the entire Budget Committee and the Select Board.
I'm excited to join.
Well, in all seriousness, it'll be enough to add your expertise, so, we appreciate it.
And is this, um, the next one Vanessa for?
Yes, it is indeed.
Did the, did the question ever get answered about whether somebody needed to be a registered voter in town to?
I think it did get answered, Vanessa.
Yeah, so we talked to, um, NHNA and there are some boards where you have to be, and you have to be a voter, a registered voter in your town. Um, but besides that, and some of them say like you have to be a resident, but they don't have anything about, you need to prove your residency, so as long as we know that somebody is a resident.
Hmm.
Um, on the HDC at least, it doesn't matter if they're registered to vote, so, um, Vanessa is.
Okay. A property owner, and yeah.
All known that she is the owner and she lives there, so.
Right. One of the most visible houses in town, so.
Okay, perfect.
Yes.
No, I'm just glad that got, um, that got answered.
Yeah, absolutely. Did you want me to hand that in?
Yes, so you guys, um, have extra stuff.
Okay. Thank you. We've all got them, okay.
Yep.
Alright. Alright, so why don't we turn our attention to the meeting minutes from the, uh, September twenty-second Select Board Meeting?
So for this one, we have both the copy of the draft minutes and a copy of, um, the suggested edits from Beth.
Yep.
Because there were a lot, um.
Sorry.
It's okay, um, so I highlighted the ones that aren't grammatical or, like I highlighted the ones we need to go over, so.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
On line one sixty-three. Um, Beth doesn't recall you guys saying that the plastic message boards looked nice, um. I, I remember something being said about like some of them look nice, so, um, you can strike it or you can edit it or whatever you three feel is inappropriate.
Well, we know Beth's thoughts.
No, I just, I just didn't know if that's how the conversation went, plastic mess, message boards are one of those things that we talked about being different than painted cute signs or printed signs, so I just wanted to be correct. I don't, I mean, they're perfectly useful, so I don't know, I think we're gonna have to discuss them because of the one that the, um, Canterbury Tales currently has out, but. Uh, I think that's part of the sign policy thing, so, I don't, that's not a biggie for me one way or the other, I just don't remember it.
Calvin, thoughts?
I remember somebody making a comment about them, they could, I think along the lines of they could look nice or they can look nice, not, I don't think we, I don't think we elaborated on, I think it was just a. I don't even know if it was us per se, but I, I do remember there was a.
Yeah.
Comment that they can look nice or did look nice. I wouldn't be too worried about either way, how they wanna handle it, I don't think it's.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll leave that.
So just leave it, yeah, yeah, leave it.
Leave it. Um, alright, next one is line two fifteen. Um. So, adding at the end of line two fifteen, Calvin was concerned about an, uh, an ordinance that might be excessively hard to regulate.
So I, I just went back, when I read the minutes, I thought that it wasn't, it didn't quite have a, a context of the discussion, which was, you know, is this about dirty dirt in roads? Or is the ordinance bigger than that, and what's the purpose? And, you know, I think you made a good point, it could be hard to regulate, but, um. You know, and then I just went back to the video and looked, cause, because I did think it's kind of, to me, it was important that it get in there that this is not just roads.
Right, no, I.
That it was a bigger thing, so, I don't know if it's okay to put in your concerns and then what I was saying about it, so that's just, to me, that gives it context.
No, I'm okay with that because that, that is the gist, that I'm just concerned about having stuff we can't, we can't regulate.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so.
Okay, and then, um, also the, the section underneath it, um, adding that Beth expressed, and then that paragraph, is that?
That's okay, okay.
Alright, and then, um, concluding with on line two eighteen, it was decided to go back to the planning board, um, does that look?
Because otherwise it just ends and we, we talked about what.
Yep.
We weren't going to do it, so, what happens next, so.
Yeah, that makes sense, yep, yep.
They went, we booted it back to them.
Okay.
Alright, uh, and then the last thing is line three fourteen. Um, adding more explanation about, um, it's, it's not really the electricity prices, it's the, um. The electricity prices and the adder and, um.
The adder.
Yep.
So just explaining that a little bit better.
Yeah.
So the reason we're not getting money in the account isn't because the prices are higher, it's because we're not using the adder. If we had, if we were using the adder, we would get the money in the account, but we're not, so.
Right, exactly.
Unless people opt up.
Unless they opt up, yeah, which I, if I remember correctly, the first year that I stopped keeping track, there were only six people in town that opted up. Very low number unfortunately, so.
Alright, so that's, that's it.
Okay.
And this, and that's okay, that last one, oh, okay, ordinance, I just wanna look, ordinance says construction. Okay. The conversation said logging, but the ordinance says construction, so it doesn't.
Um, I was considering them to be synonymous, so I, if we don't want, I can put.
Well, I don't know, that's, that's cute, because to me, logging is different than construction, like if somebody building the house next to me, they start at seven thirty. But if they're logging, they can start at six thirty, but the house building.
Or, they've been better, I thi, I think that the logging company is aware of what is coming down, and they've started later.
Yeah. So I don't know, I just wanted it to be clear so that in future, if somebody goes back and looks at it, you know, if I'm building, can I start building my house anytime I want? Or logging specifically, to me, logging and construction are different.
Um, so, I guess that's similar to the, to the other suggestion that I said no to. Cause that's not actually what was said, so, yeah, during the conversation, you talked about logging, but in the ordinance, it's, it's actually, it says construction, so, that's kind of a.
But even the amendment from the floor, the amendment, because the conversation when Ken said it was amended from the floor to allow the exclusion for logging.
Um, that's not what was published, um, like the final thing that was, it was, the thing, the amendment from the floor was to strike, um. The whole definition of, of, um. Or to, to strike the section that said construction is not allowed, um, so. The exception is for construction, not for logging, it's for all sorts of work-related items.
Oh, okay, so, good, so construction, so it is, so lo, according to your note here, logging is included in construction?
Yeah.
So house construction can begin, like logging, as early as they want, yeah? Oh, okay.
Yeah, and so that is more of a, if you, it, that, that's more of a. That would need to go back to town meeting if people wanted to edit that to be more clear.
Okay, if that's what it says, then that's fine, I wasn't aware of that, okay, that's fine, thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, anything further on the minutes?
No, I think I'm quite done, thank you.
Alright, then I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five as amended.
Aye, second that, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you, Cal, for chasing down the details. I keep finding things in my office that I put face down, and then I'm like, what is this men, oh, it's the back.
Alright, Brookford Farm, uh, called Ken earlier and indicated they would not be able to be here tonight.
Okay.
So we do, however, have a request from them. That I'd like you both to look at.
Um, do we wanna talk about this at the same time that we do or the sign notice?
We, we could.
Or just move that up?
Actually, I've got a thought with respect to them, and it may cover Harry.
Okay.
As you both know, we have some regular farmers market being another one.
Yeah.
People that regularly place signs, um, there, um, some of which are in compliance and some are not in compliance. Um, my thought is with people like, um, Hackleboro Orchards, Brookford Farms, that we, instead of making them fill out, especially in, in Brookford's case.
Yeah.
Fill out an application every time they're gonna have an event, we give them, um, kind of a seasonal permit, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
But with the stipulation that each sign has to meet, and, and that's where I think we've, we've kinda dropped the ball in the past. Um, each sign has to meet the standards for signage in the, the center of town, um.
And the other, I'm not, well, okay, I'm not sure I actually mind the, the printed pumpkins and, and puppet signs. It doesn't fit, but, but that, that aside.
So I.
What, the bigger problem I have with his signs is that if the event is, at some undetermined time in October, they go up in September.
Hmm.
And then might be there for a month.
Yep.
And may or may not get taken down, that's my bigger problem.
Although I don't think that the sign, I don't think that's covered, no.
So that's something.
Are we going over the ordinance right now?
No, but.
No, right now, we're, we're just really dealing with Brookford, but, um. I think Hackleboro, uh, also, because, I mean, Harry places a sign, I don't even know how long it's up there.
Well, that's Caesar, yeah.
July, pretty much until, cause blueberries.
For first, it's sad, you know, it's a, but, but this, for, for, I think you have a good, a valid point for somebody who does a lot of things.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah.
And maybe Brookford, you know, they print up all those signs by the hundreds and disperse them, but they make an, a wooden one for the center.
Right.
Um, they do look nicer, and it does fit better.
Yeah, and I think that's the, and, and I guess where I am is either we're going to hold signage to a standard or we're not. And, and if the answer is we're not, then.
Do the signs in the center have to comply with the ten square feet for the remainder of the town, or is there a different size dimension? Does that make sense?
It does make sense.
Cause if you're going two-sided, versus one-sided. Yeah, ten square feet's a sound ordinance, or sa, the size of a sign in town is ten square feet, that's why when you do like zoning or, you know, the big companies, they.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
They get the special exceptions for bigger.
And, um, Calvin.
Different from the town center sign policy.
Right, and I was just curious if, if that, i- if the sign policy for square footage supersedes that, it's not explicitly written in the, the center ordinance.
Correct.
So they have to follow the ten square feet as well, is my assumption.
That's, I, I agree with your assumption, I, I think, I think that is correct, um.
That's where I don't. Cause like Harry's apple is big, I don't know if it's ten square feet big.
Yeah.
So I feel like we've, like it or not, we've got the sign ordinance discussion with Brookford Farm, if we can move it up to, is there, is there a reason why we can't?
Well, what I, actually, here's what I'd like to do, is let's deal with this first.
Move that up? Okay. Okay.
And then we can expand to, to I guess a larger discussion, keeping, well, I'm actually gonna have a lot of time, because at this point, Aaron, uh, from the village will be coming in at six.
Okay.
So we've got plenty of time to talk about this, um.
So he, if I can steal this back again, so his is for two signs in events according to the, so if he's willing to do it and make them wooden and make them pleasing.
Of course.
Um, and that's as long as they're not up at the same time, in pumpkins and mullets in October.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
November and December.
See, that's the thing.
Is it two separate signs or is it two times, two signs concurrently?
Well, it says pumpkins and puppets October, Christmas with the cows, November and December, so I don't know if that's the entirety, is that two months?
Okay.
So it's two different signs.
Okay.
So the only thing addressed in the current, uh, sign policy, um, is that, uh, a maximum of four signs you're allowed at a time, so, hey, what do you? Good?
Um, the one that we're looking at with the highlights?
Yep. Yep.
That's not the current one, that's.
Oh, that's why I had.
That's the draft.
That's the change.
That, that's the change.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry. The current one came like two weeks ago, maybe.
Yeah.
Um, sorry.
That's the time, town center, but it doesn't say anything about, and this is just.
How about that one, two thousand nine?
Two thousand nine, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, I got it.
But that's town center, so I think the one you're talking about for zoning is different.
That's the whole town sign policy.
Yeah, and I don't have a copy of that.
That, that's why I was just curious, is how do those overlay each other, does one supersede the other, does?
Um, so, the zoning one does supersede the center one, um, but in the new draft, it references that.
Okay.
So in the, in the old one, it doesn't talk about that, but in the new one, it does say that they have to mesh.
Okay.
Yeah, and there is, in, in the current one, there's nothing, uh.
Nothing about numbers or how long.
Yeah.
Number of signs or how long.
Well, then how do you, so it's four only at any given time?
That's the draft, and that's what we're proposing, we haven't.
Right, we haven't.
Right now, it doesn't say anything about that.
Just wondering how do you allot?
Well, that's just it.
Numbers of signs, it goes on, you know.
That's, that's what the discussion will be, we haven't decided.
Okay.
Right, and really, we've okayed three, right, right now?
Um.
We have that new one?
There's.
The woman that's doing the new business on.
On Moral Road.
Moral Road.
Tracy Ennis.
Yep, um, Harry and Luke.
Pumpkins, yeah.
Yeah, well, there's three right there.
Hutchinsons, I think Hutchinsons are approved, the Christmas trees and Sugar House.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I think Clough Tavern might have gotten approved at some point.
Yeah.
I'd have to go look through the files to see, cause I think some of them too were specifically for this event, so they're no longer.
Yeah.
But by the time.
Yeah. Yeah.
And by the time, you know, Clough Tavern goes up, Harry's is down, cause he doesn't, you know, soon as his, he closes at Thanksgiving, so.
Right, right, yeah, that's a good point. Right, but it is something to, to keep in mind, four, four may not be a.
Yeah. Four might not be enough.
Or if it's four, you have to restrict the size, so they can't fit.
Right, well, that's the other thing.
Well, they're, um, they're different.
Yeah.
Alright, this is gonna be, this is gonna be a bigger discussion, we would, this is gonna be bigger than Glass Six Roads.
Well, once again, I wanna turn this back to this before we, we move on.
Yeah, yeah. I would say, um, yes to that, and the only thing I would say is if, if they could have dates on them so that we, you know. Do we have, so they're not up for an entire month?
Yep.
If for one event, it would be, you know.
So what would be the allowable time you could put them up?
What do you think?
That's where I was going.
You wanna?
I mean, you gotta advertise it, right, to get people to see it, you don't need to advertise for pumpkins in August, but September, I mean, thirty days prior to the event?
Yeah.
I don't know what's adequate for getting the word out. Cause they've already had their first week of the pumpkins, that was this past weekend.
Yeah. Oh dear.
I mean, under the current way it's written, I see no issue approving it, I mean, obviously, we're gonna.
Put it up on the first of the month and down by the end?
I don't know, I, I, I think that, um, if I was a business owner, I would want as much lead time, as much advertisement time as I could get. And, and I think that we shouldn't make anything up arbitrarily tonight.
Yeah.
We should just roll that end of it into the larger discussion and assign ordinance.
Right, but if we're gonna, if we wanna, um, answer Luke.
Yep, I, I think how we answer Luke is just, um, to say that, you know, he, he has acknowledged, or, um, Catarina's acknowledged that they're gonna follow the current policy. Um, and that's all we can ask at this point.
Well, yeah, and if you say October, okay, go, put it up the first of October, take it down after the event, if it's a November event, it can go up the first of November, take it down after the event. And if it's a December event?
Yeah, I, I, I'm just not sure we placed that restriction on anyone else, though, I just wanna make sure we're being fair to everybody.
Well, the other ones are seasonal, so, you know, it's apple season, you know, and that's a really long season.
They are. Agreed, but, but I don't think we restricted Harry from, as to when he can put the sign up, did we?
When the season started, I guess.
I don't know.
That's part of the ordinance, alright, so, so, but if, then if this sign goes up two months, you know, if he puts up a, uh.
Well, it's early October.
Christmas with the cow, no, if he puts Christmas with the cows up in November first.
I don't know when it is in November.
Usually it's the first week of December, he runs like first and second weekends.
It says November and December.
Um, you could just approve it with the current policy and the new one take effect January first.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I am, let's do it, and, um.
I'm gonna say, okay, per current policy. And I'd ask us each to sign, and actually, let's date.
I should know when, uh. I should know when Christmas with the cows is, because they sent the flyer for it three times for October by mistake.
Getting ahead of the curve.
Alright, I'm actually gonna put a hold on sign discussions for the moment.
Okay.
Um, you're here to discuss speeding, Old Voice Road? Thank you for coming.
Yeah, of course.
So, I don't think you two have had the opportunity to look at this information yet.
Boy, boy, do I have some thrilling stuff for you.
Oh, thrilling, scintillating stuff, I heard about this, this morning, but I didn't look at this, looked at the numbers, looked at this.
So this is related to the young family that came before us at our last meeting about speeders and, and really, I think it's honestly.
Yes.
So it's not just there, we've, it's been on a whole lot, we've got Kimball Pond, we've got Hackleboro, we've got over on Baptist, we got Baptist Hill, we've been getting complaints about.
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay.
Pretty much every, every road, we're getting complaints, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, which.
Some are just a little bit more vocal than others, and some are a lot easier to enforce than others.
Yeah. Yep, okay. So if you remember, we discussed some options to control speeding, obviously one of which is enforcement.
Correct.
But, um, have you, you must have seen the, um, choices we got on, yeah.
So, I've got a few of them here with me, so I have.
I think they're the same ones we have.
So I, there should be two for a speed trailer with a sign?
Yep.
And then there should be two for a black box recorder?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Who are the grants through to do these?
Uh, we still gotta look, we still gotta figure out what we can do for grants, we were hoping to use the highway safety grant, but. I found out this morning that there's been a little bit of a hiccup in where the money has been going to when it comes back to us.
Okay.
So, until we can get that straightened out, there's not going to be a grant.
Okay.
Um, the, the deadline to apply for the grant has already come and gone, but they've offered a little bit of leeway, given our circumstances.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
So if, if we do end up going with the highway safety grant, which is the one that will end up paying for most of it, it's a seventy-five percent reimbursement, so what would happen is we would pay. You know, if we went for the most expensive option, just, if we went and spent six thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars on the top of the line, everything we don't need option, then. Once we're done with the grant, we would submit and they would reimburse seventy-five percent of that back to us. Depending on where the funds come from, if they come from the police fund and the way the grant is set up, then those would have to go back into a police fund to be used by the police.
Okay.
Um, the way, the way the highway safety grant has been going is the funds are supposed to come back to the police anyway, and not go into a general fund for the town. So, that's, that's kind of where the hiccup is with moving forward for the next one.
Yep.
But that's, should we do, end up being able to move forward with that grant, that's where the funds would come from. So we have, with that, we have a few different options, um, one of the, one of the options that was brought up was to do a speed trailer with a speed sign.
Yep.
Just from my personal experience in time in law enforcement, I can, I can honestly say that is a horrible idea. A, they get vandalized all the time, it happened to a very neighboring department that, in the, in the past, I think it was two years ago. They had it out in a, in an area they were having issues and it got tipped over and smashed with a bunch of rocks. So they, they are open to vandalism.
Okay.
They're not very accurate, usually when people see them, they do one of two things, they speed up or slow down, rarely do they make in the same speed they are going. And usually, it's more towards the side of speeding up, you like to see how high a score they can get. Right, so with the other option, the other option is more expensive, but it's going to give us more accurate results, the second option. The second option is a little box that we can put on a tree, a pole, something like that.
Yep.
And we set it, we leave it for a couple of days, we go back out, and that will tell us exactly how many cars, exactly what time, and exactly what speeds they're going. If we go that route, that allows us better enforcement, is if we see that, you know, every day at two thirty-five, there's a car that goes by sixty-five here on Hackleboro, then we know, alright, maybe around two o'clock to three o'clock, we sit up there, because we're gonna know what time it is.
Then you'll know when to sit someplace.
Exactly, it 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 definitely helps out with the enforcement, just because I personally sat on on Hackleboro, which is a place we've received multiple complaints on.
Okay.
I I've only got less than a handful of stops out there, and I've spent quite a few hours out there throughout the day.
Yeah.
So it's it's really hard for us to be at the right place at the right time.
Yeah.
Where something like this, unless you're actively looking for it, we're not gonna see it.
Nope. Makes sense to me.
We did get a couple different options for both, um, it was, an option for solar was requested in both, and in both, solar was not recommended, J J Mar themselves, I spoke to a couple different sales reps in J Mar, and they were very adamant that solar is not the option for us. It's, it A, it's not cost effective, it's gonna cost us about a thousand dollars more to do the solar option.
Mm-hmm.
And they said that for what we're planning on using it for, solar is not gonna be a viable option due to the simple fact that the solar is for more of a permanent fixture. So if we plan on having it forever in front of the school, solar might be an option for us, but where we're planning on moving it around, it's gonna, it's gonna be more wear and tear. It's gonna be harder for us to get the sunlight we need, it's gonna be longer setup times, take down times.
Well, we think if you're trying to somehow make it less obvious and put it on a tree, you're not going to be getting any solar.
Exactly, if you're gonna be putting it in an obvious place, it'll get the solar it needs.
Yeah.
Also with the solar option, they come with lead acid batteries versus just their rechargeable option, which is the cheaper option, that comes with the, uh, rechargeable lithiums. And we did get a couple different price points with that, the the basic price point for the recorder box itself was four thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars even. And if you guys don't have these, we're very easily can get these to you.
I think we do.
Uh, the actual, like, did you have the?
Uh, yes, actually.
Actually, you've got the actual, right, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So with those, their most basic option, four thousand five hundred ninety-five, I called and asked, you know, to get the rundown of of what that would entail. And that right there is basically just the the most basic equipment you can get. It's not something we would be able to use, we need at least a package with the Nexstar.
Yep.
The Nexstar software is the program that runs it. So getting the basic option will work, I have no idea why they sent that over as as a thing, maybe it's for people that already have the software, but so, the laptop is is one of those don't need it, it's a nicety kind of thing, they said the software comes with two licenses, so we can have at least two devices that the software can go on.
Okay.
Having a laptop that we could interchange between vehicle, depending on who's going out to maintain the device. It's a nicety, it would be, it'd be convenient, but, you know, depending on what we have for equipment, it may not be necessary. I don't know what we have for going on for the future of the MDTs, and we're still in the process of that. So, seeing as how we're operating.
So is it a proprietary kind of laptop that goes with this unit, or can any laptop run the software for the unit?
Any laptop, any laptop can.
Like, any of the random laptops I have in my house that you could res- purpose?
As long as it's got some interwebs on it, we we could use it.
Um, the problem right now is that most of the used laptops we're finding are Windows ten, which is ending on October fourteenth, so,
Okay.
um, we absolutely, I I'm pretty sure that there is a Windows eleven lying around somewhere that we could use for this, um.
Well, the the option to do the kit with the software and the laptop, there looks like there's, so four thousand eight hundred ninety-five for the, just the kit with the with the software, it would be an an additional three hundred even to get the laptop. Or do the add-on down at the bottom for an additional six hundred, but.
Three hundred bucks for a laptop? Or at least seems.
That's not a horrible deal.
Well, it's it's not for the laptop, that's that's part of the, that's part of the whole
Yeah, it's for. Okay.
deal that they have going on, the laptop itself is five ninety-five.
Alright, that seems more like it.
Right, so if we do, if we do the kit with just just the tracker, the kit and the software, it's forty-eight ninety-five, if we decided to add the laptop afterwards, as an add-on, it would be five ninety-five, or we just do the laptop package.
Okay, so they're giving you a deal if you buy it altogether?
Right.
Got it.
Again, depending on what we have laying around, we may not need it, it'd probably be helpful, but, um.
And this, so this would, um, allow us to get at least one of the units that we could move around town?
Right, so this will come with one unit, uh, the basic, the basic one comes with one unit, comes with two rechargeable lithium batteries. You only need one at a time, they're good for four to five days at a time, which really is all we would need it for.
Yeah.
But if we, if we set it out for four days on Hackleboro, then we go, we put the new battery in, we set it down on Picard for four days while the other battery charges, we can keep moving it every few days with a new battery.
Gotcha.
To get more accurate readings around town, to actually dial in on these trouble issues.
And is a, and is a, um, five days enough or four days enough time to get a good sense of who's?
It should be, I mean, if if we get it out there, we, most people are going to work, what, beginning of the week, at least Monday, Tuesday?
Hmm.
And then we could leave it out Saturday, Sunday, so we're getting the weekend traffic, as well as the beginning of the week commute traffic.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it wouldn't need to be just those days, I mean, we can have it out all week, all it's gonna take is us going out, swapping out the battery, and it's
Right, right.
If we wanna leave it out there for a month, then we just go back every four or five days, swap out the battery and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that seems a lot more reasonable than having an officer try to sit there and see some, especially when we're down on officers as it is.
It's it's been difficult.
And you've got, um, I mean, this is, not that this isn't important, but this is a lot of time sitting as opposed to doing everything else you need to do.
Right.
Um, that's what these are designed for, so this, that to me seems.
They did send over a second quote for a modem, and that's that's going to be completely useless for us, the modem is just so we can dial in remotely if we wanted to.
Oh, gotcha.
And like see, and get the readings?
Right, so we could just send it to the office and get the readings from there. And then that comes with a yearly fee, or we could just drive out every couple of days and and get them, so I think the the modem one, they they did send a quote for it, but that's not gonna be something that we need to worry about.
Yeah.
And then, let's see, I think that's all I had on that.
So you really have noticed an appreciable uptick in people complaining about speeding around town, interesting, okay?
Definitely have, yeah. Most of them have, the the ones that I've personally heard, I've heard multiple for Hackleboro.
Yeah.
And I've heard a few for, uh, Baptist Hill.
Okay.
Uh, we've recently started getting some over on Baptist by Baptist Hill. But, there's there's.
Yeah, yeah, I know more of that incident with that young man in the noisy car, but.
Yeah, we've gotten a few about him and a few about another vehicle that's been doing similar similar things, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep.
There's definitely been a uptick with complaints about speed, which
Yeah.
we're trying to handle, but.
Thank you, I'd be happy if this went to live on Hackleboro for a little bit, to get the motorcycle that's going at midnight up the
Yeah, well.
the hill at a great rate of speed, or something that sounds like a motorcycle, who knows what it is? I know it's not you, cause you go twenty miles an hour.
Then we'd be able to dial in on when it's going out there and how fast it's going and
Yeah.
able to adjust our schedules from there and.
So what do we need to, uh, do tonight about this?
So I, what I, what I think I'd like, certainly you two are free to agree or disagree, is, um, if we can get the highway safety grant, that would greatly reduce the town's cost. Did the chief say, do we need some kind of resolution first? Before you get, yeah, that's kind of what normally happens.
We. We do. Yeah, we was talking this morning and that's, that's when we found out that there wasn't,
Yeah.
there weren't, there weren't certain things set aside
Yeah.
for for budgets, so.
Right.
Is this, the state was very clear that these funds are to go back into a police fund and not a general fund.
Yep. Alright, so, did I hear correctly, i- is it the, um, Black Cat two plus radar recorder kit with Starnext?
Do you need a?
It is correct, so it's the second option down, the forty-eight ninety-five option.
Yeah, yeah.
So that would be the one that, you know, if if we were to go minimums on it, that would be the one that we would go with.
Yeah.
If we were looking to add in the nicety of having a laptop, if we couldn't find one around town, then the fifty-one ninety-five option is the same thing, just with the laptop.
Understood, right, right.
Would be that.
But what's the long-term investment? How long does the software last, when does it expire, how much do we have to pay per year?
So the per year.
You know, what happens if when the shiny wears off?
The per year for this, we don't have one unless we decide to go the modem route, in which case there will be an annual fee. Um, I can tell you, there's, there's a neighboring town, well, a semi neighboring town, that uses theirs a lot and they lend theirs out a lot, I know we're using it right now on one of our roads. That way we can kind of get, that way we can bring in and show you guys, these are the results we're getting with it.
Oh, okay.
And these are the results we got just having an officer in the area.
Do they rent it to us, or are they being nice and just lending?
They're lending it to us, right, yeah.
Okay. It'll be, it'll be interesting, it's you could, you know, renting.
Or go professional, yeah. Yeah, they saw us out running the radar, saw that we weren't getting many results, and they offered it to us as a, as a way to help, so.
Great. So if we make the resolution to pursue the grant and then the grant doesn't come through, um, then what? Do we have to?
And we apply again.
Then then I have to talk to the budget committee.
Yeah.
And and get their thoughts on it, because this is a substantial, at at least in my opinion, fairly substantial expenditure without a grant, it would be, you know, over five thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's just one of those things where, we only have, what, three officers?
Correct.
It's a great toy, not toy, tool, we call it a tool, right?
Tool.
Yeah.
How how often are we gonna use it? What happens in six months when we address these issues, do we just start loaning it out to other towns for your, like, I just, I'm not a- against it, I just wanna see what's the long-term payout to us?
So, the long term is, it's going to be a tool we continue to use, so if we use it and six months from now, the speeding, we see serious reductions in the speed, then great, we accomplished what we wanted, if we wanna lend it out to another town, we can, if we wanna just hold it, we can, but speeding is always going to be an issue. It's never going to go away, so, six months from now, we curb it, a year from now, what happens?
Well, I guess that's kind of what I'm saying, it's like.
We're gonna need it again.
Bring it back to it, then we've still got that tool that we can put right back out and start using again.
I think whenever there's a complaint, it'll go out, like, we have the gentleman who was here last week, that's another road in town where they're having the problems and it can go over, it could go over there too, so I I can't, I can't see it not being used very often.
Yeah.
Right, it would, it would definitely get, definitely get a lot of use to it.
Yeah, but i- in in my mind, there there is a difference between the town investing a thousand dollars and five over five dollars.
Yes.
Right, right.
You know.
I mean, that software has to expire at some point, I mean, that's little stuff, little little stuff down the road, but
Yeah.
I would just hate to see a piece of equipment get used for six months, then we forget about it, or we move on, or it sits in the back of the town lot and, oh yeah, I forgot we had that there, you know, cause it is, it is a good chunk of money.
I don't think Officer Weskey's going to forget that we have it's.
I don't know, with with the amount of complaints we get about speeding and having a serious tool like that, I mean,
But, but, uh.
my last apartment, we had a speed trailer, we had to, we shared it with multiple other towns, and when we could use it, we used it, and it was only for a couple of months, every so often, like, we got it for two months a year. But when our two months came, we used it and we moved it around a lot, there were a lot of issues with it, but it it did get used, every time we had an opportunity, we would use it. And that was, that was a trailer, everything was huge, hunky, hard to lug around, you had to have a specific car to tow it to where you needed to. Had to go out there and calibrate it all the time, make sure it was charged all the time, it's just, it had a lot of issues. But even with that, we still used it as often as we could.
What's the maintenance on these?
The maintenance on these, from from what they said, it's it's a simple plug and play, we pop it up and we're good to go. I I can ask them more, you know, what the wear down time is. Uh, the only, the only thing they mentioned with the wear and tear is if we get the, if we decide we wanna do the solar upgrade, but we don't get the solar, then it's obviously more susceptible to rain damage, because it comes in a different case, so that's gonna leave it more susceptible to weather. But if we do just the regular, not solar option, it's, it it's almost like a little tough box, like an art box, something if you like.
Like, it looks like a game cam, and those things are pretty impervious.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
It'd be interesting to see, when does the, uh, the state, um, the five roads or the however many roads in town that we approved getting the traffic surveys on?
Didn't we already get it back?
Did we get?
June or July?
Yeah.
All the results, for like the dump road and everything?
Uh, I don't know, oh, you're talking about the count?
The count.
It's not speed, um, that's just a, uh, raw count of vehicles.
Yeah.
Um, we, to my knowledge, we have not gotten that back yet.
We haven't seen it, so I'd be curious to see if, you know, if this was deployed on those same places
Yeah.
where there's high traffic.
Right.
Uh, what we'd find, but, um, I'd, I mean, I would say if we need to make a, um, if we need to make a motion to pursue the the grant.
Yeah.
I would say yes, and then, again, if we don't get the grant, we bring it to the budget committee and say, okay, this is still a worthwhile project, can we do it?
Right, but.
But we're still gonna be pursuing the grant, because the the grant is, the, it's an umbrella grant.
Yep. Okay.
So we we applied for it for this year and we were awarded for it this year, and it comes with, uh, applied for other things, it comes with a speed grant, so it gives us time to go out and and run, you know, speed patrols, where we just sit solely on one oh six for two hours and we saw any car that's speeding, there's one that's solely for DUIs, we go out at DUI trouble times and hunt for DUIs, so
Yeah.
the grant is, it's an umbrella thing, there's a bunch of sub grants in the main grant, but as part of that, the equipment is part of it. So, so we're we're applying for the grant, we're we're hopefully gonna get the paperwork to you guys soon, we just have to get a couple of, uh, of small bugs fixed on that from last years.
Okay.
But the the grant we're going to move forward on, so that that one's more of an us thing than a you guys thing, kind of, I mean, you guys will obviously have to approve it when it comes, but
Yeah.
we have a couple of things on our end we need to tweak before we can submit it to you guys for approval.
Yeah.
Okay.
But in that, like I said, the equipment is part of it.
Yeah.
And just to to quell any fears that anybody might have, you know, I I understand the whole overreaching of of government and all that, and you know, fear of police tracking people, you know, from the shadows, this one isn't, this one isn't an enforcement tool, so it doesn't take a picture of your car and your license plate and you when you go by sixty, it just says
Somebody.
at this time, a car went by going this fast.
Yeah.
It doesn't say anything else other than this time, this car
Yeah.
was going this fast, right?
Just speed. Okay.
So it's not like we can just sit in our office and email you a ticket and say, haha, we got you.
Right.
We still have to read those results, go out there and then.
Yeah.
Yeah. Certainly, my feeling is the, um, you know, if we get the grant, then I think it it's worth pursuing, but.
Yeah, and the rechargeable one lithium battery, um, software and you know, for if it's three hundred bucks, if you buy it as part of the deal, to me, that's not a bad deal than trying to go hunt and find one and, you know, if it's a good laptop, but, um.
Right, yeah.
You know, again, if we had to go, um, and buy it off the shelf for six hundred bucks, if we had one, great, but.
Yeah.
To me, if you're spending that that money, the extra three hundred on top of it to get the laptop to make it work, without spending Cal's time or somebody else's time, find a laptop to make it work.
Gotcha.
But.
Yeah.
And then we would be able to just put that laptop in whichever, whichever patrol vehicle is maintaining it, so
Yeah.
if I'm in on Monday, it goes in my car, I go out and I set it all up, and then if Officer Dumas is in on on Wednesday,
Yeah.
then it goes in his car Wednesday when he gets in and he can go out and maintain it.
Can that laptop, I had a curiosity, can that laptop be used for other things?
That's a really good question.
Pretty specific, I mean, I'm sure you have other kinds of laptop needs.
Um, for us, we, everything we would need a computer for, we either have the computer in the office, if we're out on the road, the needs we have are handled pretty well by the MDTs. For the time being, I know the MDTs were having to fix some, fix some things on, we're looking at other avenues for those, but
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, would you please explain what that is?
The laptop really put in. It's our, it's just our little, so in our, in our lap, in our, sorry, in our cruisers,
Yeah.
we have little tablets.
Yeah.
And that's what we use to run our our police software on.
Well, what do the, what do the, um, letters stand for? Motor vehicle tablet, MVT, is that what you're saying?
MDT, uh, data terminal, probably mobile data.
MDT.
Yeah, mobile.
Mobile data terminal, okay, so it's not a laptop, it's the thing that's built in, it's part of the bar?
And that's. Some of them are laptops.
Okay.
Some, some departments use laptops, some use top books, uh, we have, for the time being, we have tablets.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
But that's what, it has the internet on it, so we can go to the Google if we need to, but that's what we use to run all of our, like, our spots and everything like that, to run plates, run names, enter car stops.
Okay, so it's already doing a lot of work.
Right, yeah, so we've got everything we need there.
Okay.
So, and if anything we don't use that for, we have computers in the office.
Yeah.
Um, we, feasibly, we could put the license on one of our MDTs, but our MDTs are all needing to be replaced.
Hmm.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I think
Yeah.
the laptop probably is a cheap investment if we're gonna spend.
I will look into what the annual, like, what the annual costs are for upkeep revenue, or for upkeep, what would need to look at, licensing.
Licensing. Yeah, thank you.
Randy, what's your question?
Uh, just a quick question, so when you're placing these and you see like a good spot with a tree, do you notify like the property owner that you're doing this? Cause I can imagine. Cuz I can imagine if like, there's a tree at the end of my road, it's like, or by my driveway, if I saw a black box, I'm gonna take it down and throw it in the trash.
Right, so with these ones, these are tamper proof, so you couldn't, but also, yes, that's that's something we would we would have to discuss, but that would probably be one of those like courtesy things and probably a permission thing, I mean, I'm not just gonna go and hang my stuff on your tree just because I'm a police officer and you're not, that's that's pretty horrible to do, so.
Right. Well, and even like.
It would probably take some talking to to hang on there, but.
Well, there's something in the right way, but if it's in the right way, or if you put it on the utility pole, or you know.
Right, so when when somebody calls to complain about speed to us, hey, they're speeding by our house, well, we have a potential solution, would you mind us hanging these on one of your trees?
Hmm, there's a tool. Yeah.
Down by the road. I mean, that's that's all something that would have to get get discussed, I'm not the one that can make the the overall call on that, that would be more on the chief, but I'd I'd assume that's something we would definitely have conversations with the landowners on.
Yeah.
Of course.
Yeah.
Yeah. Calvin? Uh huh, okay.
Right, so now what?
Good. So I think the now what is, uh, that you guys get some more information and then come back with it.
Alright, sounds good.
And we need a motion to say that, yes, we're pro the lithium battery, not the solar option, this is, you know.
I don't think we need it at this point, I I think that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, at this point, I think it was more of a, is this something we should look to actually pursue?
Yeah, and I think we've narrowed the focus anyway, away from the the trailer.
Yeah.
Right.
Away from the trailer and away from a dedicated person sitting and watching for lots of hours there.
Yeah.
Don't get me wrong, I don't I don't mind sitting on the side of the road for hours, that's part of my job, but.
Are fruitless. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like get, I'd like to have some actual results yielded from that instead of just watching the leaves fall, so.
Exactly.
Yeah, thank you, we appreciate that.
Of course.
Alright.
Alright, grand, thank you, we gonna keep that?
Thank you. We do, we're gonna hold on to it?
Alright.
If you guys, if you guys need copies, just let me know, or let the chief know and we can get those emailed over to you.
Okay. I don't know if there's any, could you ask him to send them?
I would email a copy to the office for sure, to play in records.
Yeah. Yeah, to Cal.
Send that to me and then I'll.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll have to actually get it over something.
Terrific.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Weskey.
Alright, uh, let's see, here we, um.
Well, you know, just think about the number of complaints we've had here just in front of us and we don't get here half of them.
Right, exactly.
So I think it's a good thing.
Yeah.
Well, how many are the same people complaining too? Yeah, um, cuz I mean, it could be the same five people complaining, that's 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 a lot of money to invest into something.
Oh, well. Hmm, yeah.
Well, yes, because if.
I can think of five different areas in town, I would find it hard to believe it's the same.
I.
Yeah.
But you gotta be on patrol to enforce it too, so it's it's a double edged sword.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't realize we could call and complain about that.
You could what?
Call and complain about people speeding on our road.
Sure.
Of course.
Can I go to college tomorrow?
Yeah.
But also like I was, we was talking about the roads he mentioned, like, have dirt pieces, so, and those dust, like.
I can't see speeding on Baptist Hill, but people do.
People do, right?
But, yeah, but sometimes even like people that are at speeding are kicking up a lot of dust and it might seem like they are, I don't know.
I would, yeah.
Yeah, and.
Yeah.
Right, so.
We'll find out.
That's actually, it's a very good point, because, um, when I, as a new police officer, went through radar, lightar training, speed estimation is included, and you, in order to pass, you have to be within five miles per hour of the vehicle's actual speed, that's confirmed with radar. It's, there's a learning curve there, you know, everybody thinks that, oh, you know, that car was going fifty miles an hour, eighty miles an hour, whatever the case was. It's usually not the case.
Yeah.
It just looks faster, when you're walking especially, so.
Especially, oh, people have been driving to our end of the road to walk in the paved piece.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, I got you.
On the dirt side.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, cuz it's so dusty.
Yeah. That's funny.
Okay, so that was, so that's good, and Erin's still ten minutes out or seven minutes out, but um.
Yeah. I see somebody walking towards us that may.
Oh, that's her right now, there we go.
So are you all done with the discussion about speeding on Old Boys Road?
Yes.
Oh, no, we didn't even do Old Boys Road, that's just.
Well, that was actually where we started.
That's where this conversation.
Yeah.
Oh, well, because.
And you said you wanted to talk about.
Well, yeah, because we, our our homework was to go drive the road, and I did today and took notes, but I don't know that, so that's, hi Erin, that's a.
Right.
Yeah.
Hey Erin.
Uh.
Why don't, so why don't we do this, um, Erin's here.
Yeah.
Let's have her come up and and start, unless you wanna catch your breath for a minute. I didn't think you did, it's about now, and then then we'll come back to, yeah, we'll come, we'll talk about speeding at Old Boys.
Okay, then we can continue on Old Boys, okay, cuz I took. I took notes on that, that I wanted.
Okay, very good, cuz I also drove and, um, and Calvin, I'm not sure if you had a chance, but.
Oh, I cruised it.
Yeah, I figured, yeah, so.
So just jump right in?
Good evening, Erin. Please.
I have, I don't know if you want copies, but I have them in case you want them.
Copies are always great.
Okay. We'll start there, although it's not like full sentences or anything, so you don't judge my writing or speaking abilities based on what you know.
Strings of consciousness or?
Yeah, just put and thought down on paper.
Understood.
Um, so I'll just talk through it if you don't mind, just an update, right, just providing a quarterly update, it's amazing now that we're doing this regularly,
Yeah.
how fast a quarter goes and how little I feel like I have to report on each quarter, but here we, here we go, anyway, yeah.
And yeah, yeah.
So just wanted to check in on the free admission to Canterbury residence, as you know, that's available to everybody.
Oh, yeah.
Um, forty people have taken advantage of that and actually checked in and utilized the full admission.
What?
We know a lot more people come and wander and make use of the place, but forty people have actually come and signed in, which I think is great.
Yeah.
Um, we had some special tours and special programs this summer also, and it was nice to see a lot of fam- familiar faces at those. I think those are people who often have already taken the tour, sometimes a dozen times, and so it's nice to have some variety in our programming, so we've seen a lot of local faces there too. Concerts were a success, um, that was super fun for me to see, that's where we really get people of all ages, um, enjoying the show and. Generally speaking, we had about a hundred people at each of the events where we had local talent.
Yeah.
And about half that where we didn't.
Hmm.
And so altogether, I think we probably had about four hundred people at those five events, maybe a little bit more, which is great, that's.
Very good.
I'm finding that that's a great, um, this was my first season of experiencing those, but it's a great, a lot of people, that's their first touch to the village.
Hmm.
And then some of them I've seen at follow up programming, um, in other things, so that's really, it's a it's a lovely thing for the people who come,
Yeah.
and it's also good for the village because it, some people are coming back.
Yeah.
Well, it seems very welcoming, you know, you wander in, you go sit, you listen, and then you go, wow, this is a great place.
And people are like, wait, I don't know anything about this, I need to learn more, and they and they tend to come back, so that's exciting.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
And then here's just a list of our upcoming events, I don't know if I should read them for the group, um, or if you're content just having them in the notes, would you like me to review them?
Sure.
Okay, so, now, come up next is the car show on Saturday, the eighteenth. Um, that'll be a fun, um, event with, you know, variety of antique cars on in the village, including Shaker Car. Um, little fundraiser happening on the twentieth, Grupony Ford is gonna be doing a mobile oil change event, um, so that is signed up through a QR code, but if anyone's interested in that, we can make sure you have that. Our ghost tours are happening Friday and Saturday over Halloween, and I've heard, I've been out of the office for a week, but that we're working on planning um, another little holiday event, at least for the Dewey School families and maybe for, um, more, I'm not sure. Roger Hall will be there on November eighth, and then we have, of course, the shop sale, Black Friday weekend. And then we are gonna be trying to ramp up, not anything like it used to be, but making a day of Christmas at Canterbury and having, you know, have the model trains, some crafts, um, some special tours, and then we'll do our concert and cocktails in the late afternoon. Um, so that's kinda gonna round out our season, in November, we go down to just two tours a day and just on weekends.
Hmm.
So we'll start winding it down.
Yeah.
And then project wise, um, as you probably saw, if you dragged by, we have a shiny new roof on the horse barn, um, which is exciting, and similarly, the B House, less visible, but also has a new roof.
Nice.
The meeting house windows have begun and I am working, I'm excited about the contractor that I'm working with, who I think will get the main body of the work going next season. Um, we have a couple of great contractors that are potentially interested, but one of them is, um, wanting to use the village as the location for a recurring preservation trades internship program and training five to six interns a season, and so this would be a great opportunity to start that. So that might be an added layer to that meeting house project that I'm excited about.
So you would have those extra young and and interested people learning and but working at the same time on the building?
Yes, yes, I think so, and staying on site, one of the limitations to intern programs is housing for short term and you can't, it's hard.
Yeah, yeah.
And so we have housing that we can provide, and so we think that'll be, um, something that'll help us get sort of the best of the best in terms of interns.
Hmm.
Um, so we're hoping that that program will get, will get going. Um, Carriage House ramp is in progress, um, Rotherham's bathrooms, um, we almost have the funding in hand, and so we're gonna go ahead, I had a um, conversation with the contractor today, we're gonna try to get that lined up for winter work. Um, the East House, I don't, I, some of these I think are updates, but we are still awaiting the L chip grant, we'll hear about that in November, but we do have the match in place for that, so assuming that grant comes in, that project will get to construction as soon as we find available contractors for that. The infirmary, I thought federal funding was dead in the water, and I had sort of taken the infirmary off our list, but we did receive a Save America's Treasures grant for the infirmary, and so this winter, we'll be working on matching that.
You have cash in hand?
Nope, so the way they're doing it, they're not announcing it this year.
Yeah.
Uh, I think they're trying to lay low and they are getting the money secured and moving it into a, what do you call it, escrow account.
Hmm.
Um, so ours has not been moved yet before the shutdown, so we still believe you're gonna see it, but at least the award has been made and we're working on that.
Uh, sort of, yeah.
Okay.
I hope so.
That's a, that's a big step forward though, yeah.
That was a nice surprise, yeah, that's over four hundred thousand dollars, um, that we didn't expect, so that could be really exciting.
Yeah.
Um, so that's the the project news, the not so good news is that our farmer Andy Messenger is leaving, have you guys already heard that?
No, I can't hear that. No, I'm at the, I'm on the board of the farmers market and it's it's great sadness.
Yeah, so yay for them, he's moving to Maine, but we are trying to figure out what that means for us, um.
Yeah.
We will either try to replace him, which will be hard to do, or this might be the moment where we bring that back on staff, we're trying to figure out what to do there.
Yeah.
Um, Andy thinks that he, I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but in essence, he sort of said it's a little lonely not being part of the team and that he thinks maybe it would be more, um, sustainable, um, to have someone on staff, so we're kind of gonna look into that and see if that works for us.
Oh, that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, it'll be missed.
Very missed.
Yes, I know, he's so, like, I don't really know anything about gardening, I can hardly keep plants alive, but, um, I know that he is really good at it and he's so meticulous and tidy and really, it's amazing, so.
Very talented, yeah. Yes, he is.
I'm certain that we won't be able to replace him, but hopefully, we'll be able to get something.
Yeah.
Um, going instead, and then just sort of new new business, we're working on a strategic plan right now, um, and we've just workshopped it with the board, so we're still really working on it, we sort of, um, whittled our strategic priorities down to three things, which might seem obvious, preserving the past, enriching the present, and, um, shaping a sustainable future, so the preservation part will really focus on sort of our buildings, grounds and collections, that might be um, what people expect of us, we have several, you know, projects in the works and going, that'll stay a top priority. Um, the enriching the the present piece, what we're really trying to do is activate the village, um, and get more happening there, um, within the village. So we are working on that Lilly Grant to update our interpretation. We've also, um, decided, um, that we will be reintroducing food service at the village, so we're working on that, I've just engaged
Hmm.
um, in a contract to to get that project moving forward, um, still trying to figure out exactly what that looks like, but, um, working on that. Another priority that's rising to the top is creating family friendly facilities, um, ideas, these are not commitments yet, but include sort of, um, like an indoor play, sort of climbing, jumping space in the garden barn, um, things like that, just to get people, um, kids out there and get them activated and and maybe coming back. Um, I think we have an opportunity to do that out there, and then really focusing on introducing multi date programming, such as internships, residencies, things like that, to allow, um, more immersion and engagement in the village. Of course, the, um, sustainability piece will really be us working on our financial, getting our financial house um, in order and moving forward, so we'll be growing the operating budget and trying to come up with a better distribution of, um, revenue. I, you know, look at the numbers, and last year, we were seventy one percent, um, annual fundraising, which is a lot of just going out and asking for money.
Yeah.
And that is not, can't be depended on year over year, so we really need to work on shifting that. Of course, trying to build our endowment to generate investment income, but we're really gonna have to look to some, um, more earned income, sort of generating revenue, um. We're looking at both things we can do onsite, of course, but I think, as you guys might know, um, there's a limit to what we can do without sort of doing harm, and so we're also starting to look at, um, what we might be able to do offsite in terms of re- revenue generation, just trying to get outside the box a little bit, so.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Still very much in the thinking and and planning and studying phase, but that's where we are there. And again, just the final note is just to say that, um, again, one thing, as these things go forward, of course, um, you and the other boards and commissions will know about them, but the next thing probably coming up is this, um, food service thing, we've hired Berger on technical to do a code review and help us with the design and permitting.
Yeah.
Um, so that'll be, I don't know, we're working on scheduling just the startup meeting, but even the startup meeting, she wants to schedule on a day that the town offices are open, so she can come in and
Really good idea.
Start looking at things, so that'll be the next thing coming up, I think, as it relates to to you.
Well, that seems to be a big loss, I mean, going to the Creamery and having lunch was always a huge part of going to the village from, you know, when we first started to come to town, it's very missed.
When we talk to people, their memories are always about food and events.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, you know, Christmas and and dinners and things like that, so, and I think just in general, you know, we're only open from ten to four, so it's lunchtime, whether you're there before lunch or after lunch, you know, I think people don't stay as long because there's not food.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But also, I think it'll be more, you know, in my mind, it's it's an opportunity, the place could operate a little bit like a, like a city park or something, and, you know, people could just come hang out, meet a friend for coffee, you know, that kind of thing, and I think we're trying to do it in a way that that's possible too. Um, I'd like to, again, code review, um, you know, uh, what, the ideas that will reactivate the uh, production kitchen, I'm calling it, in the Dewey School building, and then serve out of the horse barn, uh, which is the building right by the parking lot with the new roof, so that, um,
Yeah.
people don't have to park and walk and, you know, it's not a commitment, hopefully, people can just stop by and, you know, again, meet a friend for coffee without having to deal with admissions and that kind of thing, so.
Okay, great.
Like, still in the idea phase, but it's pretty serious about getting that moving forward, so you'll hear more about that soon.
Very good.
Okay.
Any questions or concerns for me?
Uh, no, only to remind you to send stuff in for the newsletter, because I did get the thing for the oval, the mobile oil change, but I did put in the thing about the car show because I knew you were having one, but there's nothing in there about Halloween.
Okay.
And that is a big event for you, and it used to be a big thing, and it, we had a
Coming right up, yeah.
front page of the newsletter was all about Halloween in town, but there was nothing from the village, so, and which would have been really nice.
Yeah. That is a good point, we need to do better about that, we do have a new person starting next Tuesday. He will be our communications guy, we've been without, and so hopefully, we'll do better at remembering these things.
Perfect. Well, if we have, if we have a calendar even short, I mean, it comes in, it goes in the newsletter, um, Randy's gonna be taking care of the, I hope, the, um, the online calendar for the town events, like, but would would include area events too, like Shaker Village, of course.
Great, cool.
So, you know, if we have everything that's going on, we can put you, we can advertise you there as well, put you on our calendar.
Great, yeah, we're trying to, we've been just barely keeping up.
Yeah, no, I'm sure, that's why, I mean, I I I knew there was the car thing, cuz I saw it on the bulletin board, but I I didn't even realize there was Halloween, anyway, so.
Hopefully, you can start to get ahead of it. Yeah, good. Yeah, great.
Put put, uh, put me on the radar for, yes, ma'am.
The email that goes out to everyone to say, get this is your deadline to get stuff in.
Yeah.
I get it.
Yeah.
You did it, oh, you did get it, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, thank you.
Just make sure, um, I get the new guy's name.
I was the one to say I didn't get it this month.
I get it.
You get it.
And I flag it, and then it goes by.
I know, I, yeah, I'm getting the newsletter out like October first on the day, so, just give me the new guy's name and I'll I'll put it on the list.
Yeah, Garrett, he'll be, he'll be there soon.
Perfect. Great, this is a very full plate and sounds like it's going really well.
Things are, I think we have some really good momentum, um, you know, one of our big focuses right now is fundraising, and, um, that's, we're really at a point where we're starting to make progress and that, you know, progress begets progress, like, once good things start happening, it's easier to tell people what's happening, and so I think, I mean, I know we're about to go right back into winter, and so who knows if our, will sort of slow things down, but I think there's good energy, um, having Garrett, so this Garrett who's coming in, I think I've mentioned to you, we have a new director of development, Cassidy, she's great, she's doing great things. And Garrett will be coming in, um, to help us out also, and I think just having more capacity to do things, and Garrett's also an events guy, um, he's coming to us from North Carolina, and, um, loves organizing music events and and things like that, so who knows how much of that we'll be able to let him do. Um, but I think to the extent that we can turn him loose, there'll be some good things happen, so.
Yeah.
So if we get snow, can we have coasting and then get hot cocoa in the laundry like the Shaker kids used to do?
Maybe, yeah, what's coasting?
I would do that, co- oh, sledding.
Sledding? Okay, yeah, sorry.
Coasting.
Well, you coast on a coaster, you sled on a, whatever, but.
Okay, okay.
Snow, hot cocoa, the laundry.
He's actually gonna be, not that you should go introduce yourself right away, but I I'm gonna be stepping away from the East House so that he and his wife Rachel can stay there while they immerse. So that he and his wife Rachel can stay there while they immerse themselves in the area, figure out where they want to actually live and that kind of thing.
Yeah.
So he'll be around the village this winter, he might.
Perfect, and his name is Derek, Derek, you said?
Garrett.
Garrett.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Awesome, well, thanks for the time.
Perfect, no, thank you, this is a great update.
Yeah, always good to see you and, and these reports, I think, speaking for me, they're just really helpful and.
Yeah, they are.
Great.
Making us feel like.
If you ever get sick of hearing from me, just let me know and we'll slow it down.
No, just keep coming.
Exactly.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for the time.
All right, thanks.
Good night.
I didn't look at the agenda, are there other things I should stick around for?
Sure, always, it's scintillating.
Signs. Yeah, scintillating discussion about speeding on Old Boys Road.
Sign ordinance. Yeah.
Only for a little bit, don't take it personally if I sneak out.
No worries. Good night Randy, thank you.
Thank you, so while we're saying thank you for updates, uh Cal, that the town email to everybody of. All the boards and the links and everything is really nice, and I hope it didn't take too long to do and that they keep coming, because I think it was really helpful.
Definitely. All right, why don't we go back to speeding on Old Boys Road?
Yay. All right, so I, on Old, so this is what I thought when I drove there today. Um, and I was thinking about the people walking.
Yep.
And um, Old Boys is a town road, correct? So we can, the signs that go up there is, are ours to do.
That is correct. Right.
So, this is just, I was talking, I had my phone, my memo thing on, so excuse me if I relive driving down Old Boys Road. So when you pull onto the road first, right out of the rotary and you get to the point, there's a thirty mile an hour sign there, which is.
Correct.
Crooked, bent back, and the letters are starting to fall off, and it doesn't really say like, doesn't inspire me to go thirty miles an hour. So that was part, and it was kind of obscured in the weeds. So I drove thirty miles, I, I drove the road four times, and twice I did it at thirty miles an hour, and then the, twice I did it at twenty-five. Thirty miles an hour on that straightaway seems pretty reasonable.
Yeah.
Um, it's pretty clear, it's flat, it's open, it's wide. When you hit that first curve.
Yep, the right angle, yeah.
There is no, and there is just before there, just past Brookwood, there is a slow children's sign.
Yep.
Up. So, and that's in the for what it's worth department, but um, there is the left arrow sign, but there's no indication, I thought your idea of having the. The, the chevrons is really good, because you're driving and it's dark, so you don't really realize that the road goes like that.
The winter's coming.
Yeah, and then it's not a very long distance where there's another, right after that sharp curve, like basically on the curve. There's another thirty mile an hour sign, which, you know, between that and the next really sharp curve. To get up to thirty miles an hour and then you're gonna slam down, because that next curve is equally not well marked. I mean, it does say the arrow, but I think that could also use, that's where the um, the gravel is and the gate that goes down.
Yep.
And then it turns into um, River, what, what is it down at that end?
Riverland.
Riverland Road.
Yeah.
So, you know, personally, I would say thirty, fine, but. It should slow down to twenty-five right before that first sharp curve, and I think it should stay twenty-five after that, because. Then it, when you get to the meeting house, it goes to gravel, and, you know, I tried to drive on that gravel at twenty-five miles an hour and I almost. Fell out of my car, so, you know, that should be twenty, but for sake of argument, people will probably slow down that anyway. So then when I came back and I turned around at the Riverland and came back up, so. When you're going back out, there's no indication of those sharp curves. Now, maybe you remember that they're there. But you're driving into the shadows, it's dark, it looks like you're gonna drive right into the trees, and then all of a sudden, if you're up to thirty miles an hour. There's the curve, so, you know, again, it's a speed thing, but also safety. I put another set of signs. Indicating where those curves are, because I found it really dark and hard to see, even, even though I know that they were there. So the third, the, and then coming back out, I tried to drive twenty-five miles an hour on the big long straightaway up to the roundabout. And it was hard to maintain that. Thirty miles an hour there seems fine. The rest of it, I'd, I'd say twenty-five and just make sure those curves are much better marked. And I don't know if that helps or hinders um, the, the problem with the walkers are having, but I think it would make that road a little safer.
Yeah.
Have we had any other complaints of people having uh troubles on that road, other than the walkers?
Not that I'm aware of, but.
And there are, is most of the traffic on that, well, people going down to the Riverland are transient, I mean, people who aren't driving it every day.
Correct.
Businesses that are down there certainly know the road, but.
Yeah, I, I would think so, certainly as, as you know, there are several businesses that operate out of there.
Yeah.
But also there are delivery vehicles.
Oh, that's true too.
All kinds of, and, you know, in the first section, you've got people coming and going from Brookwood.
Yeah.
Um, who may or may not be familiar or willing to observe the speed limits, I guess.
But that up till then, they're, cause they're not, they're before the first curve.
Correct, it's almost perfectly straight.
So thirty a mile, yeah, thirty miles an hour to Brookford, Brookwood or Brookford?
Brookwood.
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 Is, is, I think, to me is fine. It's after that that I would make it twenty-five and just mark those curves a lot better.
Right, so if I remember, we'd have to, if we, if we wanted to reduce the speed limit to let's say twenty-five after Brookwood.
Yeah.
Um, I think we'd have to get, well, it sounds like we need a replacement thirty mile an hour sign as you go on to the road.
Well, at least straighten it, straightening it up and put it like, right where it is, it's like right in this whole bunch of shrubbery.
Okay.
Whereas like twenty feet ahead of it is like a clearing, where if you've stuck the sign there, you could really.
Yeah.
See it, cause you come off the intersection and you, if I, if I wasn't looking for the speed sign, I'm not sure I would have seen it.
Yeah.
Cause you're paying attention to the, to the thing and you're, you know, whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd move the sign and stand it up.
Right.
And all it needs is a black magic marker, there's a couple of letters, you know, you know.
One, I think so.
But stand it up and make it clear, and then the one after the first curve, again, it's practically on the curve, and that's also in the shrubberies with. Things hanging on it.
Right, which I think is, is something that that family that came and talked to us mentioned, is the um invasives that are growing out, you know.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just creating even more um issues, you know, with space, so, what are your thoughts, Cal?
It, it is not a good corner, you know, I, I think, depending on what's the most cost-effective way of handling it. You know, to echo what Beth said, I think twenty-five miles an hour from that corner through the end would be sufficient, I think the smart thing to do. Especially with people, like you say, that the coming and goings in the summer, people that aren't aware of that corner, it can catch it quick.
Right.
I think shy of either painting or, or highlighting those corners, it's, it's really easy to be, oh, you know, so. I think we just mark it better, hopefully that would, would solve the issue, but. It's really, it's kind of a rock and a hard place. If we can't do anything with the invasives, it makes it difficult to open up the, the visual aspect of it, so.
Right.
To me, the invasives are not what's, except for the fact that there's so much of it that it's dark. You pull, you come into the corner and it's dark, today it was, so you don't see the corner. I didn't see them hanging in the road and making it hard to drive.
Yeah.
They were hanging over the sign a little bit, but.
Yeah, and I think the complaint, if I remember from the family, was the invasives making it hard to walk.
Right, because you visually can't see people coming on that corner.
In other words, to. Right. Right.
I'm not sure I would agree with that, but then I wasn't walking.
Yeah.
I was trying to see, you know, the speed, so maybe I'll go walking.
And everything is, yeah, yeah, everything looks different, I think, when you are walking and there's.
Yeah, if you're on the side and someone's going too fast, they're probably not in their lane, they're, you know, it's.
Well, and part of it, and I'm, and I'm sorry, but part of the onus is on the walkers, because if you're not wearing high vis vests. If you're walking on a road where you're having problems with traffic. It, it's, you can, you think you're completely visible, cause you're a person walking on the road in broad daylight, and if you're wearing a dark green t-shirt up against anything. You cannot be seen in the shadows, and I've almost pegged people being perfectly alert.
Yeah.
Because they just blend in.
Yeah.
So, you know, I, I, walking on Appleboro, I always wear high vis, because it's just too easy to not see someone.
Yeah.
But, that being said, I think we can help um mark the things better, if we can, what, whatever, is it a vote at town meeting to drop the speed limit? Do we have to vote?
I think we can do that, cause it's a town road.
You can do it, but I think it might need to be a public hearing.
I think a public hearing.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Advertise it.
Notice the butters, drop the speed to twenty-five and.
I'm not even sure, well, um, you guys can figure that out, if we need to, yeah, to notice the butters.
Yeah. Yeah.
But are, are we in agreement about, first of all, I guess, where we would start in um, dropping it to twenty-five would be.
Just be, just before the first, after Brookwood, just before the first sharp curve.
Fifty yards before, probably, that's ample enough time to slow down that five miles an hour.
Yeah. And, and keep it twenty-five for the rest of the road, down to the Riverland.
Yeah.
And if somebody can attempt to drive twenty-five on that gravel road, good luck to them, but, uh, don't think they can do it.
Right, that's a whole different issue. Maybe a rental car.
Yeah, maybe a rental car, but um, that, that would be my thing, and make sure the signs are just, you know, in the, in a clear spot easily seen.
Yeah.
Um, and there is the, we also had talked one more about the, about the um. Getting another sign, but there is one there that says slow children, so I don't know if we need another, slow walkers and yet.
Yeah.
Maybe they should speed up.
Right, pedestrians, um, I certainly think that, you know, it never hurts to. Warn people about, you know, things like right angle turns and.
Yeah.
Um, that there are children and or pedestrians, you know, walking, um, but, um.
What kind of, what kind of signs can we actually put up? Can we have a sign that says anything we want? Can we say families in the road? Go slow, families in the road, or?
No, no, probably, probably not. I think there's guidelines.
Okay.
I think John would, yeah, John would.
John would go, we'll find out, but there is one sign there, and, you know, quite frankly, if we put another one around the corner. Around that first corner closer to the soccer fields, it'd say kids.
Yeah.
Um.
Children who play or something.
Yeah, something like that. I don't, I don't know how much that makes somebody slow down.
It does.
Yeah, that's the.
But.
It's just another yellow sign you gotta read.
Yeah.
Like hopefully the, you know, the, the right angle sign of the chevrons or something will catch your attention that, oh, here it comes.
Big, big sharp curve, slow down, and maybe they'll slow down between that and the next one.
Or put a school zone sign up.
Right, exactly. Do you have enough information? Do, do we need a motion tonight, I guess?
I don't think so, um, I've got it that you want, um, after Brookwood, maybe about fifty feet before the first curve, you want.
Fifty, fifty yards.
Yards, um, fifty yards.
Before the first sharp.
Before the first sharp curve.
Yep.
Um, you would want a sign twenty-five miles per hour to make it twenty-five all the way down the rest of the road.
Correct.
Um, you want signs for the sharp curves going in the opposite, in both directions.
Both directions.
Yep.
Um, and maybe chevrons to.
Certainly on that first one.
Yeah.
Um, show that, that way you can see that the curve is there. Um, fixing the thirty mile per hour sign that is currently in place at the beginning of the road and. Hopefully moving it maybe a little bit to be more clear. Um, and Ken and I can figure out which parts of that need public hearing and.
Okay.
And what the noticing needs to look like, and so we could. If it, depending on the timeline, we could either do it at the next meeting or the meeting a month from now.
Right, so it would really be, um, it changes, it looks like, to Riverland at the first shut turn.
Yes.
Just beyond Brookwood, so I think that's how we'd have to.
Okay.
Notice it is, um, both Old Boys and Riverland Road.
Yes.
And I don't think it changes names, oh no, it does actually, Oxbow Pond Road.
It does have a third.
Oxbow, yeah.
So we would make sure that the notice included all.
All three, yeah.
All three.
And we'd figure out if the butters should be noticed, and maybe we'll send out notices to the butters anyway, just as a courtesy.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, I would think that there would be support in the neighborhood.
And at some point, should we contact uh the family who came in and just say we're talking?
Well, they're in the butters, so they would.
Oh, they would get that notice, okay.
Yeah, they live, right, they live um, one of the houses down there, I can't remember which one they said.
Well, and also, um, to let, well, how much do we let people know when those. Speed boxes are going to be deployed? Well, we have to get them first, so let's not worry about that.
And, and the answer is we should.
Yeah.
Because then it spoils the surprise if you want.
Spoils the surprise.
Cal, something else for Ken, there's a road that runs off Riverland called Scotch Pine Road.
That goes into the, that goes into the development.
Does that have a speed limit though?
Is it a whole road? I thought it was just like an ax, like their driveway.
No, it's, it, well, it is marked as a road, but is it a private road or a town road, I guess?
No idea, I thought that that was, for some, I saw the sign and I thought it was just the driveway that went back to the dumpster depot.
No, no, it, it actually services a couple of different buildings.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah.
Um, we can look that up.
Yeah, that's, yeah, as long as we're.
Looking at road stuff?
Yeah, we're looking at road stuff. All right, anything further on Old Boys?
I do not think so, except I'm gonna go walk it now.
All right. Okay.
Yeah, not now.
We'll go back, wear your vest.
Not now, I, I always wear my vest. Pardon?
So I'll drive while you walk.
There you go. All right, why don't we move on?
Scintill, is this good, scintillating? Okay, River, okay, good.
I used to sit on the transportation committee in Harrisville.
Okay. It's all about the roads, all about the roads.
All right, uh, why don't we move back up to, um, the highway garage lights?
Yay.
I think I'll slide out on that.
All right. You got, you got enough of the good old days, all right, thank you Erin.
That's the old business. I don't think that there's much.
The garage lights just seem like a. A big mishmash of, you know, what we can do, what we can't do, what they'll pay for, what we can't, what they won't pay for.
Ken sent me an email, I'm not sure, I think it went out to everybody on the, uh, select board.
Today?
Yeah, uh, today at eleven fifty-seven AM, um, to.
Negative ghostwriter.
No, all right, so the email says, um, I don't know how I got it actually. I guess, yeah, he included me along with, uh, um, John.
Okay.
So it says, Unitil got back to me about the lights, they will fund five thousand dollars and the remainder. Through the electric bill with no sensors. Um, it might be a good idea to install the sensors in the rows near the walls as we discussed this morning. So if someone comes in the door, we'll come on. Um, however, since he sent me this email, which was, like I said, eleven fifty-seven AM. He called me mid-afternoon and the electrician brought up that the sensors are infrared. So in the.
The heating things and the ceiling set them off.
Correct. The electrician feels that it'll throw the uh sensors off and the lights will come on when they, they shouldn't. So we may very well in cold weather just have the lights popping on randomly because of, of that.
But.
So.
And this was, because when I talked with Ken about it this morning, and he hadn't talked to the electrician yet, and that was a concern.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
About just putting the sensors on, well, the ones nearest the outer rim, that would be far enough away from the infrared. That it wouldn't trigger them, but, but he weighed in that he thinks they will.
I think there's a. Yeah, there's a maybe there that unfortunately I think has, has come up.
Yeah.
Um, so the other part of the issue may be that the sensors are required for us to get the grant.
That's what it sounds like.
So, so I, I, I think at this point, we just need to get more and better information about sensors. Um, because I, the building I retired out of at the state had sensors everywhere, including the firehouse, and they worked reliably.
But what was the heating?
The heating was the same.
The same?
Yeah.
So can you call your buddies back at the firehouse?
That's what, actually, I'm, I may just take a ride down.
Yeah, what the heck came out in your ceiling?
Just put a blanket between the sensor and the heater.
It, it may be something as simple as, as.
Piece of plywood, I mean, you can hide IR pretty easy.
Right, a blanket or, yeah, some shield. The guy that's in charge of all of the driver of safety buildings works in my old building. And, and we had a very good working relationship, so I'll just look them up.
That's a good reason to go, just go visit.
Have a cup of coffee with him and, and get some good information.
And the infrared, those sensors are the only type that are? They don't have timed ones or motion ones?
So, I think they do actually have motion-activated ones, which may, I, I think, um. If I understood Ken correctly, I think that the infrareds may be part of the grant package.
Oh.
Um, so I think what we need to do is just get some more research, figure out.
Yeah. Well, and the motion ones have their own set of problems too.
They do, yeah, actually.
Strong gust of wind.
Well, no, Ken was telling me about certain facilities with a broom that.
Somebody in the bathroom, yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
I mean, come on, um, all right, so we need to know more about the, the grant and what it in.
Yeah. Yeah. And, exactly, what it, it will cover, yeah.
And sensors. And your, your job is, we, we're deploying you to go have coffee.
Right.
And get your old, old building, yeah, and, and find out what they got.
With, with my bud, yeah. I'll gather information. Um, so I think that for now anyway, we're, we're just in the, still in the. I'll gather information, um so I think that for now anyway, we're we're just in the still in the information gathering.
But um if we don't, until we get it worked out, can we can we get really good, have lamps for the guys so they're not trying to work on the trucks with flashlights? Like they're doing because something's, I mean, eight out of thirty, I mean, that's gotta be stark in there.
Well, you know, but we've got a time change coming up that greatly affect that, so, yeah, and it's hard to believe, I think we've only got. One more select board meeting, maybe two.
Switches right around Muzzler season.
Yeah, exactly, which is coming, so.
So what can, so that that does lead me to really think about a bigger question.
Yeah.
Until we figure this out, they're working in the dark, so or darkish, and they do use flashlights, which I hear, okay. You often work on trucks with flashlights, fine, but is there a way we can help with the ambient light situation until we figure this out? Sort of getting floor lamps?
Well, there are.
You can make portable battery floor lamps, we use them for all the time.
Yeah.
You can use them for everything, you know, town events, whatever, they don't have to just be in the highway department.
Yeah.
It would just matter what tools do they use there that are battery compatible or plug in.
Cause the fire department has some and they use Milwaukee's.
Yeah, they're great lights and they, the industrial ones, they make some serious lumens, I mean, you spend money on them, but they'll throw some light.
So the answer is yes, it can be done.
At what cost, one?
Yeah.
I mean, is it, is one enough, is it, you know, what's the actual problem? That when they walk into the bays, there's no light, or while they're in the bays, there isn't enough light, or is it both of those problems?
So guessing, I I have not gone in there deliberately in the dark to to check the.
Oh, field trip.
Field trip, yeah.
Um but I would I would guess it's both.
Okay.
I I think it's it's probably a little both, because certainly you get under one of those giant trucks and it's dark.
What would be the timetable for the grant? How quick would it?
Well, yeah, that's the biggie if it's.
I don't know at this point, uh um it it's a Unitil grant. So I I in my experience with those is their um navigation is much faster. Than a federal or even a state one.
So we pay for it, they reimburse sort of thing?
In general, yes, and I think that, I don't know, if you've been involved in this at all, yeah, but typically that is what happens.
I heard that too.
The library, right? They do a heating cooling grant or something.
They do indeed, yeah, that is correct.
So if we could find out the timing and if it's going to be months.
Yeah.
Think of some sort of short term help for the guys.
Yeah, Ken expects to be back on Wednesday, I believe, right?
Yeah.
So I'll give him a call on Wednesday.
Okay.
Um and and discuss that.
You still have to go have coffee.
Yeah, well, maybe I'll go after after coffee.
Okay, that would be good, because I I didn't realize that it was, I mean, that's personally, I can't work in the dark and I would think.
No, we don't want them to.
No, it'd be prone for accidents and everything else, so.
Because of, yeah, we've already had incidences, but we don't want another one.
Yeah, um speaking of time change, if we can jump ahead a sec to 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 do business on there is.
Okay.
Time change. Aki?
Oh, my name is not hockey.
Times, I mean, we did go to six o'clock for a while there, is that helpful necessarily or what?
I like six, don't get me wrong, I understand you guys get five and I don't wanna ask for more, I know March through June, six o'clock meetings are great. Cause I coach an hour away, practice doesn't get out till five.
Oh, March through June, okay, so not now.
No, I mean, hockey's now, I got somebody else taking my kids to practice, we just carpool with other people, but yeah, no, if you guys wanted six, you wanted five, I can make it work. The only months that are really difficult are March through June.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll put that on the.
Yeah.
Bring it up in April, no, May.
No, bring it up.
January.
January, February, I'm having trouble, February.
Notice a change.
Yeah. Put that in your calendar, remind us to talk about it in January. All right, so good, all right, so now we're back to sign ordinance update?
Right, sign, and that's Calvin discussion of the draft?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, which I I opened up already.
All right, wait a minute, I've got my draft here somewhere, let me just find it again.
So I updated several things, but highlighted ones, it seemed like.
This, yeah.
Yeah.
Hold on, ah, there's the draft and there's the original. And what else is in here? Oh, the cap, wait a minute, we didn't talk about the CIP.
No, because you keep shifting this off.
Oh, oh, no, 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 sorry, I didn't mean to, I didn't um, it got added to the end of the agenda.
Yeah, we're we're gonna get to it.
Okay.
See, I keep track.
Okay, yeah, me too.
A little hash mark.
Me too, but I didn't go back up and see.
No, I mean, we're on old business, so let's let's stay there, do the sign ordinance update and.
Oh, I know why, cause I'm looking at the agenda that I printed out and it didn't yet have the CIP on it.
Never use the original.
I should never use the original agenda, I do that when I go in to talk to Ken, so that's why.
Gotcha.
Got it, all right.
All right, so the the uh sign ordinance update, um hopefully we're all looking at the same one, it's got. Stuff that that Calvin highlighted.
Yeah.
So I guess the first question that is a a difficult one. Is do you want this to be just a center or all town owned property?
So do we need to be more specific, because what's the sign policy that you're talking about big, about business signs?
So zoning board, which we can probably pull it up on the zoning ordinances in the sign policy, which is, do you have it?
Yeah, it's it's section two point six at the top of this new draft, um I.
You reference it, which I think is good.
Yeah, I just don't know if you had the the blurb, it's only like a paragraph long.
Hmm, it's like four paragraphs long and there are eight prohibited.
Yeah, that's what I meant, that's what I meant, it's like five paragraphs.
Cal, will you um remind me how I find the ordinances again if I'm on the website?
Just Google zoning ordinances.
I never have good luck doing it.
And then you can download the whole file, all hundred twenty pages of it, and then it's a searchable PDF.
It's also under municipal and then policies and ordinances.
Or that.
And it's on the planning board page and zoning board page.
All right, so.
Put it in a lot of places, it's very.
All right, so if I'm here, this one, the revised one, all right. I don't know why, it just don't, never seems to make sense to me, all right, so there we go, so now what page?
It's um page six.
Really?
Section two point six.
Almost, there you go.
All right, page six, two point six signs, all right, so we have signs versus center sign policy. Which if we make this effective for the whole town, then of course this is no longer the town center sign policy. It's the town sign policy, which makes it sound like this, but this is talking more about.
Be town land sign policy.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
Town land, so that would change and it would also, yeah.
So I guess a couple of questions that that I have sort of come up with, um. Number one is, how do we enforce this for the entire town? Do we do it on the basis of complaints or?
Well, so I brought this up with, I went into Ken today, cause I was kind of a little on it. And I said, you know, what do we consider town signs, is it Baptist Hill and Baptists, is it these these places, and if we have that. And they have the the signs up, you know, your your T post or whatever you got there. If that's the case, do we then say each business that applies gets a eight by twelve placard? We don't limit the amount of placards, but we just say if the airworks wants a sign, here's your sign with an arrow. You know, what what do we allot and is that something we want to manage and mitigate?
Right, that's, and I guess, let's let's say I'm the, whatever, doesn't matter, I'm a business here in town. And I go to Beth and I say, Beth, I'd like to put a sign on your property pointing people toward the airworks. It's on private property.
Yep.
What then?
It still has to comply with the ten square feet, I believe, but I don't know, because most people apply when it's their business on their land.
Well, no, it says shall be limited to onsite locations only, one per business, according to the ordinance here, so. You couldn't come to me and put your business sign on my land.
But that's what the airworks has done and that's what the um smokehouse has done.
Not airworks, cause airworks is at the end of their own, oh, they do have one there.
On the on the the posts.
But that's town, that's not, uh.
So that's the conundrum is what?
Yeah.
And so we get back to your original question is, how many of those up, I mean. It almost makes more sense to do it like they have on the front of the Canterbury store, have one sign post and then. If you have a business down that road, airworks, arrow, White Flower Farm, arrow, whatever, arrow, they all look the same and that's all it says.
But how much space are you allotted and what if ten businesses show up on that road, do you put a second sign post up?
Right.
That's the tricky part is is that once you open Pandora's box.
But now we've got two of those things, one for the smokehouse, right, and one for White Flower Farm, I'm not sure that looks, I didn't see. I saw a smokehouse came down, but I didn't see it went back up.
They put a new one up at the end of the smokehouse road by Ken Stern's barn, they just redid that sign last week, like re.
The one at the Ken Stern's barn?
Uh where Briar Bush comes into Baptist Hill?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they redid that sign last week, they put it back up and and.
I haven't seen, I haven't seen the new sign yet, but I knew they took it down.
Yeah.
Um and then, so there's that one and White Flower Farm and Airworks.
And I think the same thing at Harry's, a little triangle on uh Orchard Road, I think there's a couple there.
The triangle at the bottom of Orchard Road has Harry going up to the orchard.
And I believe maybe it's at the light pole across from the the yield.
Does somebody put a big firewood for sale?
Well, that's Jake the logger who's logging up there, that's Bronenberg.
All right, but he just put it on the light pole, but that's, you know, again.
I wanna say there's a smokehouse sign as well and an airworks maybe right there.
There used to be smokehouse on there that fell down and gone, long gone. And there's not, eh, there's a maybe a little tiny airworks, I don't know.
Well, then you could think at the end of the inner, on eighteen, the southbound exit maybe. Or the northbound, you get off the exit, you've got Harry's and then you got the country store right across from the gas station.
Hmm.
Hmm.
You know, like there's, they're kinda everywhere.
Yeah.
And you, it's a fine line between overstepping your jurisdiction as to what people can and cannot do.
Then then you're getting into like airworks is a business and it's not like a harvest, like these are, you know.
Well, but but I would argue that um. In agricultural, although it's it's mentioned in the ordinance, it's still a business.
Yeah, they're all.
They're all businesses.
Except I would, I guess I would argue the farmer's market, which is an event more, even though our signs go up and come down.
I mean, aesthetically, it would look nice if you could, if you could regulate everything and make it all the same ilk, you know, you're at the intersections, it's got this nice clean look to it.
Right.
That'd be great, but again, what's to prevent somebody from sticking Calvin's egg farm right at the bottom of it, who's gonna come by and pick up the sign?
We've had it happen, we've had that exact thing happen, and I can't remember whether it was windows.
Oh, yes.
Remember all those signs that started appearing around town a couple of years ago?
Well, here's my, here's my uh, here's my show and tell.
Oh, yeah.
So in the center today, so I put the Brookford sign back up because we had said it was okay for puppets and and pumpkins. Um who's this, um Tracy Ennis has hers and um Harry, and then this one showed up, so. This is, I mean, a fine event, we should probably support it, but it's Bo Memorial.
Right.
And this just got poked in the center.
Yeah.
So, you know, I got it, it's a great event, but you know, is there, is there room? Anywhere in the town for people who have good events like this to put stuff, but if you let this, then you also have to let the window guide.
Correct.
Well, I think the other concern too is especially with the town green is, when you put all those signs in front of memorial, that's a complaint about it.
Yeah.
So do we designate an area that says, if you're gonna put signs out, this brick to this brick, free game, like, and I know it's.
Away from in front of the memorial, I know it's disrespectful in there.
It just, those are the gripes and the complaints that people have.
Yeah.
So it's, how do you, you're never gonna make everybody happy, that's the nature of the beast, but how do we, how do we come up with a solution that is digestible?
Well, we have to balance it all, uh you know, historic and town businesses and, you know, the look of it, I mean. I'm not as concerned, well, I I say I'm not as concerned of the corner between Baptist and Baptist Hill. But there is a memorial there and a cemetery, and then if you clutter that whole corner up with signs. And that's not respectful to that either.
Right.
And I'm, and I wonder what the people in the house right there think about.
Or would they prefer a single post that has everything uniform on one, so at least it's not jumbled everywhere, getting hit by snowplows and. You know, I just, I don't wanna overstretch, over, be overbearing, it's, it's, you know. I don't know, has there been complaints about visibility or, uh the only ones I really hear are the center.
But at at the moment, so we don't get totally overwhelmed and don't end up being able to do anything. Do we leave this the town center and deal with the clutter in the historic town center and then? Have a town, a wider town property sign ordinance, which which would might just be this one with other.
I think just addressing the center right now is probably the the action item, it might be interesting to see what people think if the town needs a. Town business, I don't know what you wanna call it, intersection ordinance, I don't know what you would what you would label it, but some people might be more welcome to having neat. Signs laid out, simple, re-digestible, not clutter.
I I, what I foresee, um because if I remember, doesn't this have to go to town meeting if what?
So you're confusing ordinance and policy, this is a policy and this is something that you guys have control over?
Right, no, I'm actually talking about the ordinance.
You're talking about the ordinance that would have to go to town meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
So potentially, we could, we could address the center policy, come up with something for town meeting if we really wanted to pursue it, or if there was enough. Interest in pursuing it.
Right.
To add to the ordinance that would deal with the rest of the town.
Right, and that would be something we'd have to bring up a planning.
Correct, and my opinion is, um we're we're already into October.
Mm-hmm.
We're just starting the budget cycle in in November really. Um I think it would be a very, and the planning board, as as all of us know. Um has a major project that they're they're continuing to look at. Um and and their plate is full, their plate is over full, I think at this point. Um so I I think that policy, as Cal said, we can talk about the center. Come up with a, if we wanna make, you know, a a uniform policy. Um and then my suggestion is leave the ordinance until we can all kind of catch our breath.
Oh, yeah.
And and.
Be a great next year project when you have time to think it through, yeah.
That's true.
Well, it's also not as a big of a problem in the winter, because people have a darn hard time sticking the signs in the frozen ground. So it's more of a summer problem, except this summer, when the ground is so dry, trying to get the signs in is tough, but.
You gotta bring a drill.
Yeah, my opinion is, you know, that that um stuff like that is is.
From another town for another event, yeah, I think we can be clear, I think we can be clear on that.
How hard would it be for us to make an eight by ten white placard that says no signs unless permission just to stick over there?
Right.
I mean, that could be an easy way to kinda have people say, oh, I can't put that here.
Right.
You know, if I don't have permission or consent for the town. But if you put a little one, maybe it helps kinda clean some of that random driving through stuff.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, cause that's probably exactly what it was.
Yeah, the intention's not to hurt the local businesses or hard to make it difficult, but it's just, that's the town green, it's sort of the pride of the historic center and we need to clean it up and. We'll keep it that way, right.
Um I can make a little sign, I can make it hand painted and cute. But, so we're gonna leave this at the moment, we're just gonna focus on town center.
We do, yeah.
And let's, let's leave it at that.
Yeah.
Um.
So I think any further discussion should be about the policy.
This to be just the center or all tone, so at the moment, no, we're just gonna leave it the town center for for number three.
Well, actually, I I think um I think the answer for the ordinance is we're just dropping it for right now.
Yes.
So I I think we just need to sort of forget the ordinance stuff.
Correct, so on, so number three, which is, do you want this to be just the center or all town town owned property? We are striking that, because if it's all town owned property, we get into the ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's. Okay, so that is all signs, town owned land in the town center, okay?
Right.
So I wasn't un-un, I was unclear what a temporary sign erected by town staff for conducting town business, that's like voting at. At the town hall.
Parking, the stuff for like town uh.
Fireworks and and right, all the other events that take place, you know, the musical events, um.
Hmm.
You know, there's any number of.
Wait a minute, that's not.
That's a different thing.
No, this is temporary signs erected by town staff for conducting town business, that would be voting, is all I can think of, right, or what else?
It would be voting, it would be like, yeah, public hearings, it would be like when the fire department puts out the pancake breakfast sign.
There you go.
Be um like an anything that a department needs to put up temporarily.
Shall we, do we need to specify that? Such as voting in public hearings, et cetera?
I I think that, I think we should probably leave it as town business, because why handcuff ourselves?
Okay, so this part was new, I like the description, town owned land includes.
Actually, though, that wouldn't, if we're talking about the center.
Yeah, around the gazebo, the cemetery, Elkins Memorial Building, town offices, town hall and library, that is the center. Yeah, around the gazebo, the cemetery, Elkins Memorial Building, town offices, town hall and library, that is the center.
Um, so I put an or there and highlighted it because there's, you could either describe it. The colloquial way, which is the gazebo, cemetery, Elkins Memorial Building, town offices, town hall and library. Or you could be more technical about it and say it's map one oh six lots one, two dash one, three. Well, um, I. The colloquial ones, um, the gaz, green around the gazebo, part of that green is actually owned by. The market, by the store.
I thought they owned just to the curb, prior to the curb.
Um, based on the tax map, it looks like they get like a couple feet into the green, into the grass.
Oh, cause the pin is in the parking lot.
Then the tax map might be wrong.
I never trust tax maps, just because they're, they're, the pin is probably three feet in off the curb on the corner.
Okay, then, then that's not a problem, so, um, would you like colloquial or technical?
I say colloquial because anybody who's reading it isn't going to go look it up to say what the heck we're talking about.
Can you do both, can you put them in parentheses after the description just to affirm it, so there's no second guessing?
Specifically, colon, blah, blah, blah. Yeah, agreed.
I can do both, alright.
So, D, I had, uh, this was kind of what we got back to in the beginning. Uh, erected only for the specific duration of an event, but if we're talking like Brookford. To sell tickets before an event, then we need to alter that.
Right, well, or the Farmer's Market. Because you, you put your.
We do two days before an end.
I mean, I think thirty days for a, a major event for one of the farms is, I think that's enough. I mean, if you're doing an October event, September advertised, December event, November advertises.
And Canterbury Fair, those signs go up, so have a go of. June.
Kinda when school gets out, they put them up.
Uh, well, the Canterbury Fair gets into a later. Into G, which is a later question about events on town property that have been approved, so. That may not be the greatest example, but yeah, like.
Or fourteen days prior, I mean, and I feel like you need at least two weeks if you're gonna like, for Brookford especially to advertise. I think two weeks of eye traffic.
I, you know, quite frankly, if it's in the center, they've got so many signs in the rest of the world. If it's only two weeks in the center, I'm not sure that's a hardship.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that if you've got, like Harry's got his up most of the summer. Maple Sugar doesn't interfere with Harry, so you don't really have, I, I'm just concerned if we have a, a limit. How many, what's a fair amount of time to give somebody without saying, hey, you're, you're hogging the spotlight, let somebody else have a turn.
And I, as long as we're consistent in the application thereof, that's, that's really what I.
Well, if somebody's coming to ask, somebody still has to come ask, right? So if we say, come ask and you can put it up two weeks before your event.
I did insert, um, item K, if deemed necessary, the select board may make exceptions to material and duration requirements. So you could say, in general, it's a fourteen day limit, but you could, or whatever limit you want. But then, on a case by case basis, you can say, well, this is, like you can have it up for a month, or you can.
Then I might move K up. Closer to D. All signs must be temporary, erected two weeks prior to a, an event, or for the duration of a harvest. How's that? I just forgot what I said. All signs must be temporary and erected two weeks prior to an event. Or for the duration of harvest.
No more than two weeks prior?
No more than two weeks prior to an event.
Or.
For the duration of, of a harvest. Of a harvest, and then I would put K, right, either as part of that sentence.
Um, I didn't wanna put K there because it says duration and material, and material's talked about later.
Um, so can we leave material off and then add it? Okay.
I think it's a short enough policy that people, we can expect.
They can do it, okay, do you want an exception for local candidates during February and March?
No. Keep the town green, the town green, keep the politics off of it.
I don't think political signs have.
Not in the town green, no, cause they were on like Howard's Lawn.
Correct, but that was Howard's choice.
Keep it clean.
And laws.
Yes, but we would, um, that's, that's gotta be part of our other cons, uh, when we deal with the ordinance because. You know, again, like, it's, might be fine to have three different candidates on the little corner down by. Kimball Pond and one thirty-two, except sometimes candidates put up two signs, and then you have six signs there, and then you get complaints. About visibility, so we'll have to deal with that later. Okay, so no exception, so then we should say, no political signs.
Agreed. Yeah, yeah, because there are signs.
No political or candidate signs.
Cause the whole purpose is, of this policy is for agricultural and business purposes, not political.
Alright, so, do you want an exception during events for parking, event signage for events on town property that have already been approved?
So the reason I, I put this in there is. They might have many signs up during the event or just prior to the event, um, Farmer's Market is kind of a. It, cause if you put.
We have three signs up in the center on market day.
Right, and, um, like the Canterbury Tales, I think I put that as an example, when there's one of the. Concepts in the center, like Kevin was talking about parking signs for the event and the handicap signs and. When, and then the store will put up, I mean, on their own properties, but it's kind of related, where it's like during an event, a whole bunch of signs go up. And we don't really wanna have to have permission for each one of them.
No, so do you say, uh, permission, permission is, is extended? For, uh, signage during the event on town property that have already been approved, how about that? For additional signs.
I can, I can phrase it.
Yeah, whatever.
A little work smithing.
But if you're okay with that idea.
I would say yes, yeah, you know, then the gist is, yeah, you've already, your event is approved, you need more signage to the day of the event, yes. However you say that.
Um, that actually comes back to the, um, two weeks prior to an event, or only for the specific duration of a harvest. Um, if the Farmer's Market gets approval, um, two weeks prior to an event. Because it's every single week, that means it will be up all summer. And maybe you're okay with that?
I mean, as long as it's hand painted and complies, right?
Um, yeah, so that would just be a difference that I would rather do.
We already have approval, we got, we asked and got approval for our. Plastic sign in the center that goes up two days before the market and comes down market day, but goes up and down for the eighteen weeks of the market. So what is that considered?
If you, if you go with the erected no more than two weeks prior to an event, then to me that means it can be up all summer. So I just want you guys to understand that the way. This would be written would allow that.
Since it's a, well, since it's an ongoing event all summer.
But it would just have to be hand painted, that's the only caveat.
But, but our, but our sign, but no, no, it wouldn't have to be because we, the select board can make exceptions to the material. And the select board has approved our pre-printed market sign. Now, we also have two hand painteds, we have, well, a hand painted cow, a hand painted sign, a printed banner.
But that would fall under event signage, yeah, cause that one only, those only go up.
Market day.
Yeah.
And then the one sign in the, I mean. If you want, I'll make a hand painted one that goes right on the corner, that's.
I mean, me personally, I hate plastic signs, I think they look horrible on the town green, I really like the way the, the hand painted. People took time and took pride in the signs, especially in that part of town. If it's been approved, it's been approved, you can't, I do, I really like it, I think it looks.
I'm making this face because if I, the sign needs to be painted, I'm gonna be the one painting it. Do you know how many signs I paint every year?
So you're good at it, it's, I don't know, it's just one of those things like the aesthetic, like we fight so hard to preserve the historic center and the, the chic of it that. I feel like it would be a cop out to not have that, but if it's been approved.
I will happily, um, agree with that.
You got, you got six months.
Just for the record, I agree with Calvin, I, I think that.
Alright, that I will make two signs because they've got the two winter markets.
There you go.
And then the one, uh, for the one in the center, I will do a hand painted sign, and then the ones the market day that go up. Now, we haven't talked about the rest of the town. So I'm leaving the plastic ones that direct people to the market up, but I will make, I will.
Breathing room there.
I will happily, mostly happily paint.
And I think what we're trying to do is acknowledge the historic significance of the center of town and.
Alright, I agree.
Especially with the tricentennial coming up, I think it would be, it'd be really fitting to kinda embrace that look. You'd hate to come up for a ceremony and see the Hampshire Energy Expo, stuff right next to Lilac Bush.
I agree.
Yeah.
Alright, if on the action item list, would you please put Beth Blair will paint and paint two adorable signs for the Farmer's Market?
If you, if you, uh, uh, end up agreeing that January first is when this starts. At least you don't need to do it for the November, December markets.
Look at that.
Okay, I like it.
You really would have six months to do that.
That, I'm fine.
My only question though is, is with the application process, for instance, take Harry or Hutchinson Sugar House. That's a yearly thing, is there a grandfather rule, is there, do we say reapply every so many years, cause it'd be a. Pain to make them reapply every twelve months for something that's.
We know it's gonna happen, yeah.
Right, as opposed to like Luke might change his event for puppets and pumpkins and make it, oh, whatever you do in the fall.
So I, I think in this may require some wordsmithing, to me what makes sense is Hutchinson's is a. Pretty static, I mean, they, they're syrup, maple products, you know, stuff like that, Harry. You know, we know it's blueberries, it's apples, it's, it's, you know.
He does blueberries and apples and, and Hutchinson does syrup and, um, Christmas trees. So we know we're gonna get those.
Yeah, so I don't, thi- this is just my opinion, I don't see the need to reapply yearly or, or unless they substantially change.
Or if you take a season off or something like, fakedly, I don't know, it just, it just seems like a nuisance to make people continue to come back for yearly.
Um, the one, do we, so long as we're getting into the aesthetics of things. Do we have to approve the sign, and two, like the Smokehouse, if the sign is up for fifteen years and starts to look, can we say, can you please repaint your sign?
I, I think we can and should.
Alright, then we should put that in here.
So I can add, um, a section about re-upping, um. And maybe. Um, is that something that you could make at your discretion, so when you make the approval, you can say how long the approval lasts for. And it could just be generally like, five years is what you generally do, or indefinitely, if it's like a harvest for a farm that's there all the time.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think in Luke's, yeah.
That would put a lot of power in, like a lot of discretion.
Right, right, and I think that, you know, even in the case of, um, Brookford where he's doing multiple different events that are going to vary from year to year. As long as they, and, and the letter that we have is a good example of that, as long as they adhere to the policy. I think I'd be good with, okay, then, you know, for.
Yeah, signs come and go and according to the policy and, if we notice that it isn't, that's a difference.
Then that, then we address it, that, that's, I think we're, cause I think all of us. Um, you know, we're, we're all in the center of town frequently, and certainly, I, I notice the signs. You know, as soon as I, I drive up, uh, the road, I see the signs, so.
Um, so are we going to well, oh, so we've, we've moved on to signs, well constructed, aesthetically pleasing, paper, lighted?
It's time to talk backwards.
Oh, sorry.
The cross out for plastic message boards, I misunderstood your conversation from last time, I thought you said that some of them looked nice. So that you were thinking about maybe, but I can just uncross that out and, um. And leave that in, um, is there anything else?
Paper, light, plastic, now, but however, we are currently allowing, no, the, the lies.
This is getting scary.
No, 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 because I was, because it happened, it went back and forth three times, the, the plastic sign, message board for Canterbury Tales. We were going to put, um, uh, on the corner of the town hall, but, um, Rachel said, put it on the. Porch of the library, so there it's fine, so that's, so otherwise, no plastic message boards. That one's on the, on the, uh, library porch, they're fine with it, and that's there, they are allowed to do that.
So, you guys keep talking about, um, hand painting and wooden and stuff, it doesn't actually say that, it just says must be well constructed and aesthetically pleasing. Do you want to specify?
Cause well constructed aesthetically could be a plastic sign.
No, it says no plastic right there, huge letters. I mean. Part of me wants to have it say that, because there's no, there's no guessing, there's no, you can't say, well, I thought we could, no, this is this and this.
So what if you get, oh, so you know, then you get into the, who decides is aesthetically pleasing? Somebody takes a board and they paint it and they got really bad handwriting and it looks lousy, but they did their best. And you come up into the center of town, we've got a, we get a picture of the sign.
I think, well, I think in the case of a new sign, we're all gonna notice it and see it.
Couldn't that be part of the application process?
Yeah, picture of the sign.
Give you a picture of what you want, you know, like I don't wanna, I don't want to be driving in the center of town and. Come to my, you know, Kiwi Harvest.
I would think, I would think it's not, yeah, I would think it's not inappropriate to say, show us what you mean, now. Um, I think, um, Tracy Ennis is also, that sign is also a good example. Because, yeah, it's aesthetically pleasing, you can't read it easily. Um, but I think it, you know, and we might have mentioned that when we, if we saw it first. So I'm a big fan of, yeah, see it, if you're going to, like a, like a house design. If you're going to approve a house design being built, you know, give us a, give us what the sign's gonna look like.
Now, that being said, are we gonna restrict the size for space?
I think we have to, actually.
No bigger than.
I don't know.
I mean, these tables are what, thirty by seventy-six?
Well, the, the, these things are, how big is this thing?
Eighteen by twenty, four, probably, eighteen by twenty.
You get too huge, even if it's a most aesthetically pleasing sign, you get too much bigger than this.
Well, the other issue is how many are we gonna allow, where are we gonna allow them on the green?
Well, there's that.
If there's four, like right now, it currently says four, so you figure.
So that's three square feet behind this.
Is that adequate to see when you drive, I think so. Before you start jockeying for position.
Well, then we have to look, we should go out and measure the, the thing that Tracy put up.
That's probably twenty, twenty by thirty-two, it's probably six square feet total on either side, yeah, if you to- tally them.
Yeah, um, you know, that, well, I, and I guess that's the other thing we, we're, I think there is. Do we wanna set a maximum number of signs, and what happens if we get there? If it's four and, you know, Luke comes up and says, well, I, you know. I need to make money at this event, which obviously all the town businesses need to make money.
This, this is gonna sound probably ridiculous, but could we do a daytime field trips where we just go look at the end of that, kinda measure space that we feel is adequate to place signs and then. Kinda go from there, I don't wanna limit, but I feel if we limit to three square or six square, whatever we decide. If there's ample space to put it, we just.
Well, let's, I've got like fifteen, no, I've got more than fifteen, I've got like thirty-five, no, I've got like a hundred and thirty-five signs in my garage. I'll come down with a fistful of them and we'll poke them around and see what we think.
Cause I, I think if.
Think you're right, looking at it.
Yeah, ten signs might not be a lot if they're in the right place. Or four signs could be a ton if they're right there on the corner and you, you jumble up that corner. I mean, I don't know, you're jockeying for position, who gets what, but first come, first served.
So, okay, so let's say, let's, let's leave the number of signs for our field trip, and also quite frankly, um. You know, we need to really think about this because all signs, so, like for the, um. Electric car petting zoo, there were three signs down the cemetery lawn. So, we haven't said, how many signs, four, is that the entirety of the center? I mean, we've got three on the green, and we've got three over by the cemetery, and then we've got three over by the town hall. We, 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 you know, if we're gonna start. Saying what we want the center to look like, we're gonna have to be a little bit more specific about how many where, or, or signs like. Will pop, be popping up on the end of the lawn for the town hall, because that's in this, that's described as part of the center.
Maybe if we just demarcate areas that can receive a sign.
Well, I mean, we're gonna have to approve it, but I think we need. Well, I mean, we're gonna have to approve it, but I think we need to decide ahead, you know, if if four on the green and four on the. Okay, so now if we had, if we had four on the town hall hall lawn and four on the edge of the center and of the. Um, bandstand and then four along the edge of the Elkins, is that on here too? As far as the center land?
Oh, where the.
Elkins Memorial, so you know, somebody put a. There could be a lot of signs unless we're more specific.
Hmm. Well, and and from time to time, there are signs on all of that.
Yeah.
So.
And then on, on Vanessa's lawn, if she chooses to put some there.
If she chooses to. And that, you know, I I don't think we have any control over.
No.
And I don't know if the HTC has any.
I don't, I don't think they do. Historic political sign compliance.
Um.
Yeah.
There's two sections in the zoning ordinance. There's also five, four. Five, four, let's see. Oh, that's the Shaker Village Museum Preservation District. Never mind, that's a different.
But I I guess, you know, would the, um, the cemeteries have. Leadership here in town, I I believe a sexton and other members, and I can't remember what the. What they're called, but I would say.
Trustees.
The, is it trustees?
There's trustees and there's the sexton.
Yeah, that that might at some point choose to weigh in on signage going up on the cemetery. You know, part of things.
But is that, is that verge that's on this side, the outside of the cemetery wall considered cemetery?
Don't know. That's a, really.
I mean, the nice thing is we have until January first effectively, we have to figure this out. And I think if we kinda. Narrow this list down to something reasonable, I don't think it would be bad to run it by them or run it by the HTC.
I think HTC would be the the bigger, but that wasn't, um, alright. I was gonna say, wasn't Kevin fond of the, not fond, wasn't Kevin part of the conversation about maybe putting a sign underneath, on the hill of the Elkins?
Mm-hmm.
For town stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Which I'm very surprised about, but.
Yeah.
I think I would ask his opinion.
Yeah, I think that courtesy as we move through this, to any of the the stakeholder groups, I guess I would call them.
I think HTC would be the, I mean, especially since we're talking about the lawn right in front of the historic town hall.
Right.
And and you you will be getting, of course, the, we will be getting a request from the tricentennial committee about putting a sign, a permanent sign up. About.
As long as it's hand painted.
No, it's not. It is not. But. I think, um, I think we have a little legwork to do and yeah, whenever you wanna meet with me and a stack of signs, we'll poke them around and.
Hmm.
And see, I mean, I got all kinds.
Do you want to do um like fifteen minutes, come fifteen minutes early to the next select board meeting?
Not here. I'll be off the grid.
That's right.
Yeah.
Sometimes have to.
I mean, I'm, Mondays are me.
We've got till January first.
Mondays I'm usually free if that makes it easy. So whether it's a skid, as long as it's before five.
Okay, so the three of us are gonna be off in the center, do we have, we have to post this as a meeting?
Uh, yeah, if the three of you are there together and you're discussing this, then it's.
Not the standard ten.
So that's, that's why I was saying if you do fifteen minutes early, that's not, it makes noticing easier.
Right.
Unless it's the same night as the, we could do it before the, uh, we have that extra meeting for the budget.
Hmm.
Committee. When is that?
Is that in the first week of November, right? November.
It's coming up.
Yeah. For once, don't have my massive calendar with me.
Let's see.
I wanna say it was like the fourth.
That's the election day?
Right.
That we don't have. Planning board.
Alright, I don't know.
Yeah, I actually, I don't see it.
I've got it on my paper calendar and I know I don't have that with me tonight.
If you're looking out into November, then you could just do fifteen minutes before your.
It's a good point.
But stupid question, isn't it like November third, we're pretty damn close to dark by five o'clock?
So the, uh, the time change is November the second. So it will be dark.
So it will be.
It's gonna take us half an hour. It's not gonna be any fifteen minutes. We're gonna be walk.
Flashlights?
We're gonna be walking around. Can we do it like Sunday morning or something?
I mean, I could do, say Columbus Day, but I don't know if people go away.
No.
Um.
Well, I don't.
Cause I leave, I'm out of here the eighteenth.
Okay.
And I won't be back until the twenty-fourth, October. And I might have cell service if I drive to town.
Yeah, if you guys wanna meet like this weekend, it's easy enough for me to post it. It's not.
Yeah, it, any day honestly, um, is okay with me.
I can't believe I don't have my calendar. That's the rest of my life.
Twenty-four hours notice.
Do we wanna just do it Friday? Friday afternoon?
Works for me.
I'm free after two.
Friday is the, the tenth?
Friday is the tenth, yeah.
I know that I have something, but I'll.
Do you want me to send out an email tomorrow and you guys can individually contact me with when you're available? Okay.
Yes, please, because for some reason, for the first time ever, my calendar is sitting at home covered with. Aloe plants. Does anybody want an aloe plant, by the way? I've got.
I think I'm full up.
Nine of them.
Alright.
Alright, so.
So why don't, why don't we do that? We'll just, we'll we'll get a, yeah, meeting and, and I think it's time to move on.
Yes.
Alright.
Thank you, Cal, for drafting this again. Um, this is like, amazing.
Alright.
Oh, one second, before we do move on. Edgar, did we answer any of the questions that you had that you started? You tried to ask us at the beginning of this meeting and we said, wait until we talk about the sign ordinance, and now we've talked for like twenty minutes.
A lot of it, my thing was the map was about the scale.
Okay.
So he hasn't covered that part today.
Yeah.
No, that's gonna be part of the ordinance, not the policy.
And then I had another idea for the town's time, if they, if we could.
Sir? Do we have time, more time for?
I could do it later, you know, side conversation later. Just an idea that I had.
Well, why?
Something that comes and goes, huh?
Yeah, go ahead.
And so you have a sign of all the different activities that we put, that is not staked somewhere in the ground, but is. Visible out the parking lot over there, that gets removed every day, you need and brought out.
Where, parking lot of, where Edgar, I'm sorry.
Right here in the, in the open area, that gets put, gets stapled. But gets put up and down every day.
Okay, but who, who's gonna be the responsible party, I guess, is my first question.
Let's say we have a personal party that that do it.
You mean standing in the parking lot, like a, like a sign board in the parking lot? I don't think the problem is that it's not there at night. I think it's just that it's there at all. Correct? I mean, if there's a sign in the middle of the, that the people would have to drive around?
No, I think he's saying somewhere in the, in the, in the green area, a sign that we put up daily with town movings and groovings, then it just gets taken down.
Yeah, and it just gets modified with the events, you know, and it just put up and down every day.
Right.
And it's not stationary.
Yeah, the, the issue with anything like that is who's responsible? There's gotta be somebody that.
The idea is somebody is gonna do it, but it's not a doable thing.
Well, and then, then it's, then it's going to be, I would think if it's going to be up and down every day, it would have to be one of those plastic ones with the letters. It's gonna be. Changed, which we just said we don't want in the center.
Right.
But.
But the other issue is.
Who?
Correct. That's the problem. It it's gotta be a group because, let's say you step up. You're gonna get sick, you're gonna go on vacation, something's gonna happen with one of the kids, there's always something that that's going on. Um, I've, I've been involved in some of these before and, and you know, great intentions. But it's the, the reality of every single day being responsible for getting that sign up and then taking it down and changing it. That's the problem, um, and and no one has stepped up.
But even if that was true, even if there was a group, personally, I'm not sure the center is the place for it.
Hmm.
Because if we're trying to keep the clutter down in the center and think of the number of people in town who don't off. Don't come to the center. I would say a better place where it would be at the transfer station. At least we get a whole bunch of people who go there who are driving slow, who stop when they exit or come out and right in front of you? I mean, to, that to me, well, that, we could use our traffic counter and see who gets more traffic, but, um. I'm, I'm not a. I would have to really be convinced of the, of a big daily changing event sign in the center when. Still, when there's so many other ways for people to find things out. And signs are just have, as we've seen, come with their own set of problems, but. But we'll talk about it. I don't wanna just say no, because information's always good. It's just a corker of a, corker of a problem.
Yeah, alright, so why don't we move on because we are starting to get.
Okay.
Late on time here. The capital improvement plan, do you guys have the material that Ken?
Yes.
And I guess, have you both had time to look at it?
Yes.
Yeah. And are there any suggestions on. Uh, additions, deletions, anything along those lines? I, I do wanna just let you both know that. Um, when Ken and I talked this afternoon, he mentioned that the highway, uh, the loader that's used at the. Transfer station, yeah, you're probably aware of this, Calvin, um, the, um. Both brakes are leaking and need serviced to the tune of about five thousand dollars per side. And there's a motor bearing, um, that also needs to be serviced at a, an additional cost of. Somewhere, let's call it five thousand dollars.
So fifteen?
No, that's a nineteen eighty-nine loader.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's fifteen thousand dollars on that one?
Yeah.
On the loader?
On a thirty, what would it be, thirty-six-year-old loader.
Yeah, nineteen eighty-nine.
Wow, and that happened when? Because I was just in there at like nine o'clock this morning.
Yeah, that must have, you must have found out about it after that then, cause when he and I talked, it was a little after two or.
Cheers.
Two thirty somewhere around. But I thought that I saw a loader on the CIP.
Oh, shoot, I'm looking at the lawn.
Yeah, for twenty-seven. The only, the only thing we, you know, might wanna consider. Would be to move that off to twenty-twenty-six. Um, and I know, you know, with CIPs, the idea is to kind of spread the.
Load, as it were.
Spread the load, that's a very good way of putting it.
The load of the loader.
Right.
Man, this is.
But and by the way, the, the loader is obviously used at the transfer station to load, strangely enough. Um, you know, materials from, um. The trailers and and, you know, vehicles and trucks that come through there, but also to put the salt units into the dump trucks.
The only kicker is next year, the highway department wants to replace, or slated to replace the water truck.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the oil heater, what am I looking at here? I mean, they got three hundred and twenty thousand dollars of slated replacements next year, so if you added that one sixty to it, that'd be a pretty hefty.
I agree. So do we move the, um, you know, I'm just, well, and actually, let me throw a little bit of more additional information, so. One of the highway department pickup trucks is out of service parked behind, I think, the municipal building.
Yeah, the gray one?
Correct, because it will, you know, and inspections, granted, they're going away, but. We can't in good conscience put that vehicle back on the road.
Right.
So it's just not roadworthy any longer.
Is there anything else we can switch?
Is that the highway department?
Highway department pickup truck.
Pickup truck.
Yeah, pickup truck.
Okay, so there's police or highway pickup truck.
Yeah.
What's the?
So the, the ask from Ken tonight was if we were, um. Comfortable with this, was to approve it and pass it on to, I believe, was planning and.
Should go to budget, yeah?
Yeah, and and discuss obviously with budget, uh, committee when they meet in November, or not in November, excuse me. Because that's just to talk about the, um.
Transfer station.
Transfer station. So it'll be the, the December meeting. So do we. What I'm thinking is when Ken comes back in on Wednesday, given this new information that we, that, you know, I certainly got late in the day and you're just getting now.
Yeah.
Do we want to consider moving some of the, uh, items in the CIP for the highway department? Kind of reprioritizing, um.
I think it's just tough, cause they've got so much broken stuff, like how do you?
I agree. I, you know, I, I think that, you know, as you know, the water truck is a necessity or a water. Apparatus, maybe I'll call it, um, is a necessity. You know, as I look at this, the one thing that I think maybe they could grow another year without is the waste oil heater. Um, at the transfer station, um, but that only saves us twenty-one thousand.
I mean, can they get another year out of the dump truck? Can they get it to twenty-seven and limp it through and we can repl- you know, kinda flip flop them, or is that one done too?
I think it's, it's done, done.
And the, and the salt shed has to happen?
Well, that's a good question. That's another one I think we should be discussing.
Could juggle when we're talking about the transfer station.
Correct.
Because that's a hundred thousand right there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, then you only gotta make up sixty.
You could, um, not contribute to the capital, higher equipment capital reserves that year?
The problem, the, the problem is that, um, that department more than any other, I think. Goes through vehicles because they just get used hard.
Yeah.
Um, and, um. You know, we, I, as I see it anyway, these are must haves for us to, to continue to have a functioning.
Two cap reserves.
Could we put off a police car? That's sixty grand right there. If we do a flip flop, you'd make the difference, I.
I think that's an idea.
I mean, if they're take homes and we don't have the fourth officer currently.
Right.
That might be, I don't know if chief will appreciate it, but.
But I, you know, I think that the top decisions fall to us.
Yeah.
And and, you know, the need, I think, for the highway department. And for all of us for that matter, is to have a functional loader.
Yeah, cause the police want two cars or slated for two cars.
Right.
I mean, if you get one, that's better than none and if you move around.
Well, and as you say, if we're down and off, when are we gonna find an officer for a car?
It's.
Right.
You gotta rob Peter of PayPal sometimes and.
Right, you're, you're exactly right. We do, yeah.
So if we can consider, well, where would we, would we move or just strike the new salt shed? We have to move it to the discussion of the transfer station.
Yeah, that, I think that's one of those where we need, right, as part of the transfer station discussion.
Right.
I, we should be asking, you know, we should be asking those kinds of questions, I guess. Um.
Do you want to. Delay this until you have another meeting with the budget committee?
I think, I think the answer is, I'll, I'll call, cause I gotta call Kenny later on Wednesday. I'll have that discussion with him. Um, and tell him, and and what I'll tell him is based on the new information that we just got. Uh, this evening and this afternoon, that we've decided to not approve the CIP tonight. Pending some, some possible changes to it.
And it seems like, it seems like the budget committee should weigh in on, on this more than. Somehow the planning board, I would take the budget committee first, take all that information and then go to the planning board, not the, not the reverse. Because, um.
Well, but, so a CIP is not, um.
It's not a budget.
Correct. It's actually a great way to put, um, so it, it's a.
Feels like a budget.
Yeah, it's a Christmas list.
Yeah, I would call it, yeah, it's kind of a visionary document of, of our best, um, projections.
Yeah.
You know, in, into the next, uh, six years.
Well, the fire department only has the one truck slated for twenty-nine.
Correct.
Is that probably still, does it look like that truck will hold up till twenty-nine potentially?
At this point, I think so.
Okay.
Um, you know, as, as always, no guarantees. But the reality right now for fire apparatus, there's, well, there's a congressional investigation going on.
Oh, great.
Um, into potentially price fixing because what it. Um, into potentially price fixing, because what has happened is apparatus companies have been bought by equity groups. And suddenly the prices have shot up and the timeline for delivery right now, if we ordered the engine that was approved, what, two years ago now, three years ago?
Yeah, didn't you say it'd be like five years out or something?
Correct, it would be five years out and its price tag right now would be between one point two and one point three million.
So you'd have to to get an engine in twenty-nine, you'd have to order, essentially order it yesterday?
Yeah.
Wow.
So it's, it's crazy. So.
So it might also be worth it to put, you know, the discussion off until we. Until we talk about Ares, or you know, what we're doing at the transfer station, because that's not a small price tag, they're a hundred thousand.
No, it's not.
And maybe the waste oil heater as well, since that's another transfer station item.
That could be integrated into the.
Yes.
Updates.
So those are two items that, and.
Well, I know one of the options, if if I remember, was, you know, essentially to purchase a trailer. For use as an office with a bathroom, and I, that may, I think, mean that they don't need the waste oil heater anymore.
No, it just put us in a position where we have to dispose of the waste oil now.
Well.
Because the guy doesn't take it anymore, right?
Was the waste oil heater to warm the?
To, I I would assume to warm.
I thought it was just to get rid of the.
No.
No, a lot of places heat with them.
Yeah.
It's either that, because I believe they used to go to Loudon and they stopped taking it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something got, I don't know what the deal was.
Um, somebody turned in oil that had, I can't remember.
Encantated.
Any freeze?
Yeah, something, something else besides oil.
No, I didn't, I didn't know the waste oil heater was a just for that.
No, I believe so.
Because didn't we talk about the the waste oil heater at the highway department, I thought, they were going to get one to use to help. I don't remember it at the transfer station, I remember talking about the waste oil heater up at the highway department.
I I believe it was, and then the discussion came down to transporting the oil.
Oh, that's right.
From somebody decided to stay at the.
That's right, that's right, okay.
Yeah.
Correctamundo.
But we can clarify all that.
And then, no?
So I think that there are some questions we need to have answered.
So, transfer station stuff, a police car?
Yeah, yeah, potentially.
Potential.
And and you know, I think we have to probably look at all of the items on this. Um, and maybe revise some of the estimates as well. Estim- time estimates.
Bond payments, I thought Gold Star was, why is Gold Star still listed here under bond payments if that was done?
Isn't it the last payment this year?
Yeah.
Oh, no, it'd be the new bond, right, for the new truck?
No, it says Gold Star. Bond payments, Gold Star.
That might just be a mistake, I can ask.
Okay, because I thought we were, we made big hoopla about having it be gone.
It is, it is gone.
Okay, yay?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, there, no, so this is, yeah, Gold Star may have just got left in there, but I, I don't. I can't remember that we paid off the, the command cars, the fire department, the fire chiefs vehicle.
Yeah. Bridge is.
Worth, worth checking out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
And the bridge is?
Correct. Yeah, because that was all under one bond.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I think you might be referring to the one for um, the sod farm, right?
Which is Gold Star?
Right.
I thought it was done.
Yeah, so we may just need to take Gold Star on, and I think there was a bond though for the bridge, the command car and a police cruiser or two, I can't remember.
Okay. And as far as heat pumps at the library, when one puts, starts putting in heat pumps, do you have to do them all at once?
Is that in here?
It's on the top, Elkins Library Heat Pumps. Fifty thousand.
Hmm. Good question.
Right?
I don't really answer that either.
Right. Landfill Sierra.
Yeah.
Numbers are staggering.
Hmm, yeah, they're scary numbers.
Well, and and of course, I'll hold that discussion about the officer and or how many we have or don't have, is what happens if we then hire somebody and we don't have a car.
Well, they'll still have the twenty eighteen, they just won't have a twenty twenty-six.
They just won't have a new one, alright, that's true.
And there should be a vehicle there that isn't getting used.
Yeah.
Because there's four, nobody can take it home.
Okay.
Alright, so we were through, for now anyway, the CIP discussion. Um, HB three fourteen. Caldo sent us some information.
Was an excellent recap of the.
Um, I believe it's in the.
Issue.
New business?
New business.
Um, I printed out.
Yeah. You did?
The text of the bill and I think I I sent you an email.
You did.
Yeah.
Recapping it.
Yeah.
The recap was great, thank you.
Um, so the, the decision that we need to make is, do we want to send a letter? In support or against or not send any here, that's up to you.
It felt like the first letter that we wrote or the first bill that, the first issue that we wrote the letter for was very clear. And as you've outlined here, this one seems not as clear to me. The issues.
Does it, does that make it more dangerous or less dangerous?
Yeah, well, that is a question. Yeah, I guess part of this would depend on how how much we trust NHMA's assessment of things, which. As you say, might be a bit overstating, but does that make it still something we don't wanna support?
Yeah, I mean, just because they, the person who wrote that email didn't write the greatest email, doesn't mean that.
Hmm.
They don't have a point, I I don't know enough.
Right.
Like, maybe there's case law that they looked at that they're like, oh, this is. Um, that is what they're trying to do, it's like they're gonna use this as a backdoor for suppressing speech.
Right.
Um, we just don't know.
What's the timeframe on this, like, the last one was like, ouch, we have to do that right away?
Uh, this one, I think they're not starting till November, let me check that in there again.
The NHMA one?
Yeah.
Um. October eighth, they're considering further action on the bill.
Oh, yeah, okay, so I guess we do need to decide tonight if you want to say anything.
So it's a house committee workshop and they're considering further action on the bill. It does three things, broadly private, large number of individuals from engaging.
And I'm not, I don't understand this whole consideration process enough. Like, I I, my knowledge of legislation is that, like, they were in session and they voted on stuff and then the governor signed stuff and I thought it was over, but I guess it's not over, so.
Don't they go back in December and relook at some of the stuff, isn't that like the end of the year?
That's the con reconsideration, isn't it?
Yeah, that's, I think that's what they're building up for, so.
Yeah.
So is this the same, because it says if any municipalities formally voted to oppose this bill last winter, or no? This is not the bill that we voted, that we just sent the letter about, that was another.
Yeah, that was SB two thirteen, um.
If you think this is overkill or overstated.
The, I mean, it probably did, it was created last winter, um, but it was probably among the. Five hundred bills that NHMA was tracking at the start of the session and it. Yeah, it probably dropped off somewhere.
I guess I'm just confused as what town funds we use to lobby.
So.
Engage into politi- like, what what do they consider?
That's, that's the thing, is that language hasn't, isn't changing, like, that, um.
No public funds can be used to lobby, influence legislation or engage in political activities. Requires any recipient of public funds who wishes to engage in lobbying to segregate those funds from other financial resources.
So it's similar to the one that you were looking at earlier in the year, because it kind of broadly talks about. Like, attempt to influence legislation. Does that include when the select board goes up at town meeting and says we support this, this one article, this one article?
Right.
And because it's already written like this, it's not, they're not changing that part of the language, so. They haven't been using that against towns to say like a select board can't do their job, so.
That's what you're elected to do, right?
So, so I, they haven't been using it for that purpose, so I don't see compelling, I I don't see. Them changing that. But it is weird that they're going back to this and they're saying, okay, we're making it a misdemeanor, we're doing, like, you have to segregate funds, you have to do all this stuff. I also kind of wonder, like, this is probably gonna affect NHMA more than any town.
Well, that's what they're saying, that's what their point is, it's specifically directed at them.
Hmm.
Right.
Right, so that might be why they're.
So does that mean town grants?
Huh?
Would that, would that in turn mean like the town grants, like the planning board using grant money to hire NH NHMA, would that be considered a violation of this? Because you're taking into account their perspective, their view, what they're, I'm not saying they're pushing on agenda, but you're hiring a a lobby essentially.
But we don't hire NHMA.
We pay them grant money.
Oh, we do, they do, yeah, yeah, that's true.
We do.
You know, so it's, is is that what they're scared of?
We're getting advice.
No, actually, we pay them. Um, they come and they have a blank grant application in their hand. We have a grant for twenty thousand dollars to do whatever. Fill this out, sign it, then they get the grant and then the town hires them for twenty thousand dollars to do whatever the grant covers.
That's central management.
We have your regional planning.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, you're right.
Yeah, 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 not that NHMA, I was gonna say, yeah, we don't, yeah.
Sorry.
But it's one and the same, right, I mean, is that what they're trying to?
No, not one and the same.
They're not one and the same.
No, I'm not saying they're same organization, but I'm saying like the context of you're taking grant money, which is public, I'm just trying to wrap my head around how it would. What impact it's gonna have on the town, like, what do we do that would be in question here?
What we do?
We pay them dues, we pay NHMA an annual, annual like few thousand.
Correct.
Yeah. That gives us the ability to.
Yeah.
Access their stuff and their seminars and their.
Right, their.
Everything, their knowledge and ask questions.
Yeah, their.
Yeah, they're they're lawyers, primarily is what we use them for, is we get a bunch of free legal advice from them, so.
Yeah. Okay.
If this passed, they would probably have to do some work to separate their lobbying functions from the rest of their functions. But I don't know how that would affect us.
That's a good question.
Because we don't use their lobbying functions except to get information about it, which we could get.
Well, but you pay for their dues because they pay their lobbyists.
Well. The the lobbying part of it is emails like this, like this is part of their lobbying arm and like them letting us know about.
Yeah.
SB two thirteen was part of, part of their lobbying arm, being like, this is a bill that we're tracking, this is. Why we don't like it and this is us encouraging towns to go against it, so this, I guess this is an example of what their lobbying arm does, so if they. Can't use town money for that, then they, I guess our dues wouldn't.
Couldn't go to it, then where else do they get their money?
I don't, I don't know.
It's a question, yeah.
So it seems like supporting them would still be a good idea.
Yeah, I, I don't know, this is also like. Yes, Wednesday is their meeting about it, but it doesn't. If we understand the legislative process correctly, then it sounds like maybe it's not till December that this would come to a vote, so.
Be voted on, they want us to weigh in.
We could get, we could try to get more information about what exactly this means.
I just wish it was more black and white, like, just be vague or not, not so vague, be blunt about it, like.
Well, we can contact our committee members and get more, um, it says to express opposition, but how about connecting them?
Well, one of our.
Contacting them to get more information, like, what?
One of our representatives, uh, Kimbrowski, um, he's one of the sponsors of the bill.
Hmm.
Oh, yeah.
Hmm.
So. You could try contacting him, hang on, I know.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm a big fan of NHMA and I would support their work, but I, if, you know, I don't like to unnecessarily. Start waving a banner if I don't exactly know what I'm waving it for.
Hmm.
So, and I wouldn't wanna, you know, uh, put the town in that position either.
Right.
So, um, I hate to kind of move it down the road, but I would wanna contact a committee member and say, okay, what?
Yeah, explain it to me more.
Explain, explain more better.
That makes sense to me as well, so.
Alright, so I would put it on Mr. Davis, that will contact our representative and NHMA and try to get more information about what exactly is going on here.
Yeah. Yeah. Right, that makes sense.
Why we need to support it. Use, use more better language, was the thing you sent me from the office, that was just so silly. I talk more good.
Alright, I believe we've covered everything on the agenda.
And some things that weren't.
And lots of things that were. Anybody have anything else? Alright, you leave me alone with that.
I don't, I don't believe that I have any, and I probably do, but it's usually written on the corner of my calendar and I don't have my calendar, so I'm all set.
Free of the calendar.
Free of the calendar, except I wish we could find the date of when that, um. When the budget, the extra budget meeting is that we have.
It's not in my calendar.
It's not on the.
It's it's not November twelfth, because that's rifle opener, we went over this, it's not Wednesday the twelfth.
Okay.
Okay.
That's the only definite day I know it is not.
Let me just take a quick.
Process of.
I'm just looking, I'm just looking at our, the calendar that's already set up on the.
I thought it was the four, I thought it was around the first week of November.
I mean, I can, I can find out and let you guys know in an email tomorrow.
No, I've got it on, I I'll know it as soon as I get home, but I'm just trying to see if we put it on the calendar already, or by we, I mean you.
Yeah, I don't have it either.
Planning board, board, plan, oh, wait, it must be the eleventh, because it's planning board meeting from seven to, oh, no, that's planning board.
No, that's right.
It does not appear to be on this calendar either. Planning, board, we're on the Monday. No, I don't see it here either. So. No?
Hmm, no, I don't see it either.
That is an important thing to find out.
Yeah, alright.
Alright.
We'll let you research and let us know. Alright, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that motion.
Although in favor.
Aye, thank you.
Will adjourn?